Press a little unmute button. Okay, so I see participants. So I should click on that, right? Oh, Dave, you haven't even learned. Look at it's springtime.
It is. It's wonderful.
What are those?
A wisteria.
They're beautiful.
They're dead.
Dave Marion has beautiful wisteria. Things growing from his trellises. They're beautiful.
Yeah, they were big this year.
Oh.
Good, good year. Mild winter.
Is that what makes them better?
I think so.
All right.
Nice cigarette.
Oh, yeah.
You should plug it into the screen.
Okay, I'm going high tech here. Headphones and everything.
Wow.
Holy shit.
In the control room.
I'm using my wife's laptop. She has it set up for work. Of course, when I dial in through mine, it just mirrors the office, which doesn't have a camera. So they're fixing it now, so to bypass that.
Wow. You have a camera in your laptop, though, don't you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's just not working?
It's well, because I dialed in using my village account. I logged in using that, so it automatically mirrors my desktop, which doesn't have a camera, so I do zoom through that. So managed technologies is working on it now.
I'm leaving my garden for a second.
Okay.
That's Steve Valoto in bed?
That's what it looks like.
Sure does.
Does anybody go to the protest?
No. I don't know.
Where was it?
St. Mary's.
Oh.
At five o'clock. I heard it. I heard a lot of horns.
Oh, yeah.
About it.
Wonder what they were screaming.
Hey, Jeff.
Steve, how are you?
Good. How's it going? Hi, Marie. Hi, Dave.
Hi, Jeff.
We thought you might have been in bed.
I'm eating.
Yes, we can see that.
Hey, share. Marie shared her cigarette. You can share some too.
I'll go get a big cigar.
All right, cool.
A bong. I'm sure one of my kids have one. I'll go look.
I was gonna say, I guess I'll just go to my daughter's room, I'm sure.
I don't have any kids here.
You're, you're the lucky one. So did anybody see the article in The Current on Friday about Ed? The guy who lives above Argentina Cafe and the soup company he started?
Yeah.
Oh, is that where he lives?
Yes. So I saw him today. I was talking to him, congratulating him. I said, gee, I wish I had known. I would have loved to be one of your taste testers. I love soup. An hour later, he comes back. He gives me four huge quarts of different soups. He's like, here, take these home. Try them. Let me know what you think.
Great.
I was like, all right.
He's the guy that had the bikes on Main Street.
Yes, he did the, yes, he was did the bike ride.
Moved them over to Beacon.
Yeah, I thought he was doing really well with the bikes.
He liked the spot in Beacon better. I don't know why he left.
And he's also just, I think he's just finishing law school.
You're kidding.
Now, because he's been in talking to Kathy and Tom, trying to see, like, trying to help people, especially like doing, um, tenant landlord, working, offering his, his services pro bono to tenants if anybody needs it.
Okay.
He's an artist, too.
Yeah.
Steve, what are you, what are you eating? What are you eating, Steve?
He's an artist. He builds like sculptures out of wood.
What are you, what are you eating?
Oh, what am I eating? I thought you said, what do I mean? It's a, it's a cheeseburger with no bun that just came off the grill and it's very hot. What's up, Sam? Say hi. Don't worry about it. Come here.
You got Sammy.
Hi, Sam.
Ah, Sammy.
Come on, Sammy.
Somebody's gotten a lot taller.
Yeah, show him your teeth. Come on, give him a big smile. Put your finger there.
Oh, nice.
Hey.
That felt a bong.
He looks like a hockey player. He lost his front teeth. What do you want?
Nice.
Let's go. Go eat dinner. See you later.
Now, now, didn't the guy just have his, a knee replacement also?
Yeah.
He had something, yeah, he had something that happened. I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, Fran.
Hi, guys. How are you?
Hi, Fran.
Nice. What are we growing? Grapes? Or is that what that is?
Wisteria.
It's who?
Wisteria.
Wisteria.
Okay, sorry.
That's beautiful.
I have to get some of those. I have to find them. Hey, y'all.
They need sun.
Hey, Michael.
Hello, Michael.
Hey, everybody.
Hi, Michael.
Hey, Michael.
There I am.
There you are. There you are.
Good on video, Michael.
Yes.
Perfect. Fran bought a bunch of framed certificates and put on her wall.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to look impressive.
Yeah, you do.
She borrowed, she borrowed.
You got some over there.
There's really nothing in them. You have blank, you have pretty pictures.
We have a bunch of winter coats and sweaters hanging there. Move them off the rack from downstairs. Bring them upstairs.
Yeah. And hopefully it doesn't come soon. Is there a lot of people waiting, Jeff?
Um, oh, no, there's only two. Let me let Lynn in. Right now, there's only two, so it's not.
And we're not, we're not showing videos of anyone else, right? Or are we?
Not right now.
We didn't do that last week, though. We didn't see the people.
No.
No, we just saw their names.
Yeah, we saw the names, heard them.
Okay.
So I don't see the names. Who, who else is on? Besides the people I can see.
Um, Diana Didermenko and Vic.
Hi, Vic.
We don't see them. We don't see them yet, right?
Yeah, we don't see them yet. I have not admitted them yet. So Juan Rosado, so it looks like, you know, store owners are. Shop owners are starting to come in.
Hey, Lynn, how are you?
Good.
Hi, how you doing?
Okay.
So Steve, you gonna have another hamburger?
I'll eat it later. Zucchini, too.
Oh.
Break, break between dinner?
Yeah.
What I'll do is at seven o'clock, I'll admit everybody, but I'll mute everybody other than Michael and myself.
So where did? So where did Bob, what's his name, go? Uh, the one who lives next, used to live next to the town hall.
Oh, I don't know. I just saw his thing for sale the other day. Didn't know. Bob Harrison.
Thank you, thank you.
You gonna buy his house?
Two point two mil.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of buying it and renting it out or something. Airbnb it, something like that.
There's a small sliver of that that's in the village.
Yes. I think there are something like four or five lots together. Four of them, one is in the village and all the rest are in Nelsonville.
Yeah, and the part that's in the village is really minuscule.
Yes, and none, none of the structures are on that piece.
Yeah.
Do we get taxed on that little piece?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Not much, not much.
Only to revalve. It goes for two point seven mil.
Well, the house across the street is up for what, one point eight?
Oh, that one's for sale, too? Which one?
Sorry, a Glick sold property.
Well, that's worth it.
Where's that?
Up on the hill, across the street and down a little bit. At that, at the top of Parrot Street.
Oh, okay.
One minute and counting.
Okay, there are, it looks like five, seven people. So we have five or six people in waiting, six people. Vic, Diana, Dio Domenic, Juan Rosado. F Farn, I don't know who that is, the Highland Current, and the woman who owns Poor George. So I'm gonna, at seven o'clock, I'll admit everybody now.
Okay.
Are we gonna shut videos down, though, Jeff, on everyone else?
Video, video and microphones are off on everybody else for now.
Well, I see Michael Mel, I see you, and I see Michael Turton.
Okay, let's see. Current. Okay, so Michael is gone.
We could leave Michael on.
There he is. Michael's got diplomas, too.
Or pretty pictures or something.
Eric, go ahead, because I haven't figured out how to turn off the video on me, so.
What's that?
So we're stuck with you.
You're stuck with me till I play around and figure out how to turn off the video. Oh, let's see.
Okay, so we should just get going here?
Yep, go ahead and start.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, to, uh, number two of our Zoom meetings. Hopefully, this will go along smoothly. I think last time went pretty good. I'd like to thank Jeff, our clerk, for, you know, monitoring tonight, or moderating, I should say. Appreciate that. And Michael Mel's with us also. So thank you all. We'll start with our meeting. At the end, we'll have a public comment. And we'll take, anybody who would like to comment. I think you hit the raise your hand, or Jeff will show that and we'll call you by name. And if you would please give your name and address, or that would be appreciated. And remind you that later. So tonight, to start off our meeting with a discussion on probation period for Donald Pavlock. I think that it was six months. Is that right, Jeff?
Um, you approved one year, and according to the handbook, it should be six months.
Okay, so if we want to change this, we should change it. We just have to change it by, by vote?
By vote, yes. To six months.
What's that?
Yeah, either to change it to, um, vote, make it one year outside of the handbook, or reduce it to six months as per.
Right.
Handbook.
Okay. I would, I would recommend we go to one year with a six-month review from the Highway Crew Chief. And I think we should do that, you know, for all people going forward, not just for this applicant.
Doesn't the handbook say six months with the option for an additional six months if we need? Is that basically what you're saying?
I remember.
That's correct, Fran.
Yeah. So.
So, but if we have a one year, we can grant it earlier, too, if we do one year. So kind of in reverse, but it would always be one year.
I mean, then we have to rewrite the handbook, right?
Well, we just have to.
Re-adjust.
Six to one.
I don't know. That seems excessive to me.
One year?
A year probation.
Really? Okay.
Yeah. Usually, it's 90 days, but, you know, six months, I think you can probably get an idea as to whether a person's gonna work out or not.
Is everyone else fine with that? We can just leave it?
I'm good with six months with an option to go another sixth if we need to.
Okay. Steve, Marie? Marie?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, Steve?
I agree.
Okay.
Six and six is funny.
Okay, we'll move along then.
Okay.
Next is approval renewal of the service agreement with Management Technologies. There's no increase in their service for the year. So anyone else like to comment on that?
No, fine with these.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the contract with Management Technologies at no increase.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right.
Aye. Jeff, would it be better we do a roll call on everything, or just do, say aye, or?
You could, you could say aye. I'm taking notes, so.
Okay. All right, next is banning of plastic bags for recycling and yard debris. As far as recycling goes, we don't really have a choice on that one. Our Highway Crew Chief, when, when the guy that drives for us went down to, or, well, I guess they go to Beacon to drop this off, to drop off the recyclers last week. Other people were being turned away. They were looking in the back of the garbage trucks, and if there was any plastic, they were turning them away. They let our guy go for whatever reason, which is appreciated. But going forward, we can't have recycles in plastic bags. Apparently, they can be in paper bags, or they can be in bins, and our guys will dump them into the truck. But you can't have them in plastic, black or clear.
Nice.
So I think we did, we put a blast out already on that, Fran and Jeff?
We did, yes.
Next was yard debris. I feel we should just get away from plastic totally. I think that a lot of places do. I mean, I see a lot of people with, with both, like, plastic or, or bags. Talking to Highway Crew Chief, and this was before this happened, I think, last year, he finds it difficult to use the plastic bags, because they could just bring them over to Benedict and dump them, and dump them out of the bags. But because people put sticks and twigs and briar and whatever else in there, it's hard to empty the plastic bags without tearing them open and stuff. And plus, they're using plastic, so depending on how you feel about plastic.
With a ripped plastic bag leftover that they have to dispose of.
Right.
Well, they dump it out, you know?
Yeah, what's, what's the problem with dumping it out? I mean, in the past, the, when the Highway Crew picked up the lawn debris, they would dump the materials from the debris into the back of the truck and leave the bag for the residents. My observation, right now, I think I've got five bags, plastic bags, contractor bags, of lawn debris in my backyard waiting for the next pickup, which is in two, two weeks. I have no other place to store it. So for me, going to paper, the bags that I pack are, are heavy. Now, in the fall, they're even heavier because of the acorns. Acorns, it turns out, are very heavy. So paper bags, particularly when there's wet weather, I don't think the paper bags will hold up. So I would like to retain using plastic for lawn debris. If the problem is dumping it, you could use a box cutter and rip open the plastic bags and dump it in the back of the truck and then dispose of it wherever. So I would be.
I feel like we're moving away from plastic totally, and, and the bags that are sold are, they're durable. They'll definitely take the weight. And they're also wet resistant. If you look at any of them, I know they're not like plastic. They're not gonna shed water, but I think they will hold up and people should worry about the environment.
My conversation with, with Bugsy, because I mentioned the same thing, that in the past, we used to get our bags back. They would dump them. We'd get our bags back. But more and more people are not, you know, not adhering to the fact that you don't put sticks and you don't put briar and you don't put everything in there. So even trying to cut them open and shake the sticks that are stuck in the bags from getting out is more time than they want to do. And so their, their issue is even cutting them open, they can't empty all the junk out of them.
Get stuck and tangled. Yeah.
And that one, that one with a box cutter, you can, you can get them open and dump everything out. What I fear is that by going to something other than plastic, that people will put their lawn debris out with their garbage. So will pay for disposing of lawn debris in that fashion.
Well, it sounds, sounds like right now what Bugsy's doing is he's not ripping the plastic open, and then he has to bring it down, and we're paying for it right now.
Okay, so with a little bit extra time and a box cutter, that could be avoided.
Or you could put them in big paper bags, leaf bags, and that'd be avoided also. And you, and you wouldn't have more and more plastic, which is definitely showing its side effects around the world and, and washing up on all the shores.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, 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 I agree that there, there are problems with the disposal of plastics. However, when I look at the size of the paper bags and I look at the size of contractor bags, a contractor bag is able to hold probably closer twice as much as a paper bag. If I were to use paper bags, and they break, and they will break, I will leave it up to the Highway Department to come pick up the debris from wherever the plastic bag broke. And it's just.
You're right.
The paper bag, the paper, right.
Okay, well, one thing you could, I would disagree on your assessment on how much they'll hold. You can get the, the paper ones, the leaf and lawn bags are 30 or 33 gallons, and they're just as durable. I've used them. And in fact, plastic bags, if you don't get the right, you know, I guess you gotta get the thick ones, which are even better for the environment. So for them to hold up and not rip, you can't just use regular garbage bags.
So 33 gallons in a paper bag versus 55 gallons in a plastic bag? We're talking about significantly more refuse that can go into a plastic bag.
I didn't know they were 55 gallons. That's, that's, that's a huge bag.
It is. It is. To the, to the point, to the point now where some of, some of my five bags, I can't move them. I have to drag them.
That's another danger with those big bags.
I'll hurt my back.
Hurt themselves.
Paper ones are smaller. They're lighter. You can be able to carry them.
Yeah, probably a paper.
Does everyone else feel about paper? I'm totally for it. I think we should stop using plastic totally, so.
I agree. I think it's time to get rid of plastic wherever we can. And those paper bags, they're, they're sturdy. The lawn bags we're talking about, right? They're like four feet tall.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they throw the whole bag out and it decomposes and, you know.
I'm at the point now where we don't use any bags, and we just use, we're going to garbage cans and fill them, so there's no bag at all. They can just dump it.
That's what I do, too.
But I don't have the size property that Marie has. Marie has a huge sized piece of property and would need a whole bunch of, of, you know, garbage pails to do it. I mean, I'm, I, we finally got to the point where we don't, we try not to use any bags, either for the recycling or for the yard debris. Just put them in a, in a can. They can dump them. There's no bag at all, no paper and no plastic, and everything stays dry. Um, it's an option, you know, and if, if we get to that point, you know, maybe we need to consider picking up the yard debris more often, so people don't have to have a ton of bags and they can use two or more cans that are covered. I don't know. You know, that, that's another option.
One of the problems with that, Fran, I, I, I thought about that a bit. When there's good weather is when I get out and do a lot of yard maintenance. So I, I mentioned I have six bags, sorry, five bags of lawn debris right now. I've got 12 bundles of branches. They are piled, I have two piles all tied up. They are piled six, four feet high. I have two sets that are four feet high and two sets that are probably two and a half feet high. I did a lot of work this weekend. You know, that's what people do. They work on, most people work on weekends, and, and that's when they generate a lot of their stuff. And certainly, I'm not suggesting that we pick up yard debris every week. That would be unreasonable. But in the fall, in the fall, the amount of leaves and acorns and pine cones that I have are just enormous. And it can't be, I'm not the only one that has that problem. I do, and I do have a lawn service that takes away a lot of this stuff, but I still have a lot of stuff that has to be handled.
I don't know if there's a, an alternative, other than the big paper bags that Steve and Dave are talking about, or an empty can. I don't know what the alternatives are. And I have obviously a much smaller piece of property, so I'm gonna.
There are some communities that ask residents to rake their leaves, I'm talking fall now, to rake their leaves to the side of the road. And they have trucks outfitted with vacuums that come along and just pick things up. And the village does some of that, I believe. But that's a possibility for the fall when we have the majority of the leaves coming down.
That could be problematic, too, because, first of all, you get a good gust of wind and then you blow the leaves all over the place. Or if they get rained on, then those piles of leaves don't, don't vacuum up so well. I don't know. I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of going for plastic, for paper bags only. I think we should reduce plastic in any way we can. And it seems to me that more smaller paper bags would be easier to handle. And it seems to me that more smaller paper bags would be easier to handle than heavier plastic bags. So, I mean, I'm not telling you how to do your gardening, Marie, but I'm just, I'd like to see something, I'd like to see us encourage people to use more sustainable options. And I just don't believe that plastic bags for yard debris is a good idea.
Okay, keep in mind that what will happen as a result of this is that the plastic bags of yard debris will be placed out on Tuesday mornings for pickup by the garbage truck.
That's an assumption. You know, that's not fact.
No, I'm sorry, it is fact. People that put.
I am not going to be doing that. You might.
I've never done that. But I can tell you that when people, many people, sorry. I know a number of people who put their lawn debris out on whenever they have full bags. The village picks up those bags if they're out on Tuesday mornings.
So we don't pick them up?
Nope.
Our guys won't pick them up if they're in top, if they're in paper bags?
Yeah.
If they're in plastic bags, they were picking them up and they were there on Tuesday. That means they're not opening them and they're going to the dump, which you said you don't want to happen.
Right, I don't, but.
But that's what you just said is happening.
It is. It is.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know how many people in the village. I think there's a good number of people in the village who are against plastic. So, you know, I think, you know, I think we should give it a shot. And then we need to talk to Bugsy about having his guys. You know, it's hard to tell when there's a black plastic bag out there, whether it's yard debris or real garbage. And they're not going to open every one. So it's, you know, it's gonna just, we're just gonna have to analyze it as we go along to see what happens.
And we've been picking up lawn debris already. The people, if they're putting it out in plastic bags on Tuesdays, then we're picking it up already.
And I think if we ask people to use the paper yard waste bags, even if they put them out on Tuesday, it's easy enough for Bugsy and his crew to determine which is garbage and which is, they're just gonna leave until Wednesday when they pick up yard debris. It's easier to tell the difference, so they can just.
Are the paper yard debris bags, is it more expensive than the plastic? Are they, are they as durable?
They're about a buck fifty each.
I mean, that's, I don't know what the price of plastic is because I haven't.
About 50 cents per bag for the contractor bags.
I'll make a motion that we eliminate plastic for yard debris. But we phase it in and we come up with, like, we talked to Bugsy, come up with something for the fall. And like, so continue, I think we're stopping soon the yard pickup anyway, aren't we?
No, no.
Once a month.
Okay.
Third Wednesday of each month.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think we should give it a couple of months before we, you know, before we go to it. If we vote on that, I don't think people are gonna do it right away. So I would say we started in, or we could do it, started in the fall. So I'll make a motion to eliminate plastic for yard debris and to phase it in for a minimum of two months going forward or fall. We'll just have to figure that out. So we have a second on that. Was that Lynn?
Yeah, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Yes, me.
So are we phasing this in, when are we starting? In September or?
What do you think's a good time to start it? 30, 20? Yes, September?
Either September or October, because that's when the fall leaves start.
I would say September. That gives two months, plenty of notice.
So September 1st?
Yeah, whatever the first pickup date is. Okay. Okay, next, we have correspondence. We have a lot of correspondence. I have a whole list of emails that I've received. Some, I haven't forwarded these to you guys. I'm sorry. I'll forward everything to you. I'll just summarize them. One we have from Anne Marie Diamond, Fueito Place resident. She was asking about and concerned about people not wearing masks in stores and wanted to know if there was laws that actually or orders prohibited that. And also people on the streets, what the laws were regarding that. Return email tonight. So as far as I know, it's not mandatory to wear masks in stores. I think that's up to the shop owners. If I think I have that right. And I think you have to wear them if you're in large groups. But I think there's a lot of leeway on that, on the mask wearing, unfortunately.
I think if you can't maintain social distance, you have to have a mask.
Right.
That's the suggestion anyway. But there's, there's no written law in the New York State books for this. This is just, but there are fines involved, so I don't understand how that works.
The store owners have a right to tell people who don't have masks that they're not allowed in their stores. And, you know, that's a law. The fines I know have more to do with stores not, you know, not adhering to the phase one, phase two, phase three, whatever it is type of thing. Those are the fines that I'm aware of. I know the mask is sort of like, you know, that's, the last I've heard is either social distancing or the mask. You know, if you can't keep six feet, you have to wear a mask.
Okay, next I have Lauren Drummond and also John Shear. Both had festivals. And we'll discuss this future. I'll just go through the correspondence and then we'll, we're gonna get into the reopening and discussion on this. So I'll just go over everything upfront here. So Lauren Drummond is the organizer for Putnam County Wine and Food Fest. And John Shear is for Hops on the Hudson. At the last meeting, we canceled both of these or canceled every, everything and aren't entertaining any new events, large events till after August. We'll reevaluate. Both Lauren and John sent emails arguing their case and hoping we would reconsider. Next, we have Greg Rosiski, owner of General Store on 66, asking about bathrooms and what the village plans to do and reopen, stating how a lot of people are needing places to wash their hands and go to the bathroom. Next, Tara Von Loos from Rock Street. I believe we got one from her last week. Again, encouraging the village to help Main Street as much as possible. She recommended looking into alternative traffic plans, even if it was for one day a week. And she did send a traffic plan. Again, I'll send all these to you. Maggie Overfelt Valentine and Garden Street resident encouraged the board in the opposite direction to not to change traffic patterns and/or eliminate parking. Her argument is that already there are a lot of constraints on residents that don't have parking on the side streets. And this will only make things worse. And we have Ryan Trower, just kind of had a back and forth. Ryan, I think he might be on tonight. I told, invited him to be. He was working with merchants and working with people to change traffic patterns and had ideas on that. So I'm not sure if Ryan will be on or not.
Yeah, Ryan is on.
Okay, and lastly, we have Patrick Beastman of Railroad Avenue. We have two mails from him. One is regarding the large trucks that are exiting Depot Square, Railroad Avenue, and coming close to his property and/or getting stuck. This is an ongoing situation, so we'll discuss that also. And the second was regarding decals on the village police vehicles. I'd never noticed these. I'm not aware of this. They were, there's the basic black flags, black and white flags, American flags. And there's a blue, one of the stripes is blue. I guess this is a symbol for the blue line or blue lives. Again, no, I have no background on this, but this is what Mr. Beastman sent to me. He also stated that it feels like this decal is sending the wrong message to the diverse array of tourists and people of color that could hopefully at some point soon be potential residents. He also states that it's a growing concern. So this is the first I've heard of that. We can comment on that. I'm again, not familiar with it. That's what I have for correspondence. The one that we have on our agenda is the vehicles on Railroad Avenue. I understand the, Mr. Beastman's concerned here and it's, he's not the only one. That's happened a couple of times where people have gotten stuck. So there's no signage there right now. This is a private road, but we have access through it or right of ways through it. But I believe we should be, should put signs up either at the entrance or towards the back with no exit for large vehicles. I think that, I don't know if that'll solve the problem or not, but right now there's nothing.
It was similar to the signs on Marion Avenue. Right, I think that's reasonable.
I think that's.
But I would put it at the entrance to Depot Square. I know that the 18-wheelers that get delivered to the paint store go down to the turnaround and they do probably a five-point turn in that area to get back up Main Street, which seems to be the best approach.
Okay, so go down and we'll look and see where we can put the signs. Kind of a wide area there. Everyone okay with that? Or any other ideas?
No, it was something that I thought we should, we should do for a long time. Also, 18-wheelers occasionally try to go up Stone Street as well. I don't know if we should consider a no-truck sign on that street too.
Do they get stuck there?
Yeah, totally. I mean, there's nowhere for them to go. You know, they can't make the turn down to Depot Square and they can't make the turn up to Fair Street either. I mean, that's just too tight a turn. And not to mention the wires are very low there. So, yeah, if we're doing no-truck signs, do an extra one, put one there.
So where was that again? Because I thought you said Bank Square.
No, Stone Street.
Oh, Stone Street, okay. Yeah, got you. Yes, okay, I agree. All right. Well, we'll take a look at both of those.
Yeah, and I think what you need to do is put a limit on the length of the truck.
Right, okay.
Just as we have on Marion Avenue.
Okay, all right. Next is Resolution 122020 restricting signage and merchandise on the village sidewalks. This has been a number of iterations. I think we've gone through quite a few of them, just going back and forth on these. We do have one, let me see, do you have the one, Jeff, I have, let me see where, I got it here.
What was the letter with the blue line on the flags that are on our squad cars? Did we, did we touch on that? I mean, are they disturbed by it?
Talk about it now if you want to.
Yeah, we never really.
Right, yeah, no.
I know it has a couple meanings and I don't know. It's the person that wrote the letter is not happy about it. I didn't.
He's not happy about the blue. She feels that it's, I guess it's, I guess it's racial, I guess.
It does have that, but it's also means support for the police department. There was a, there was an event where a bunch of white supremacists, racist people were using that flag at some event or something. And then, and then it turns up as a support for the police department and people that are the blue line, you know, they go out every day and, you know, do their job to protect us, I guess. And that's their symbol as well. But it was used in something negative like three or four years ago or something like that.
Right.
So maybe that's what they're thinking. You know what I mean?
That's the first I've heard of it, so I don't know. Is anyone else?
I'm, I'm, I was familiar with this. When the Black Lives Matter movement really first started with the shooting of the fellow in Ferguson, there was a backlash and a response. And they devised this flag with the blue stripe and the black, you know, the black and blue American flags and it's Blue Lives Matter. It was a, it was a direct response to Black Lives Matter, how that was developed. I think in the context of events today, it wouldn't hurt to, I just don't see why we need to make our police, our police officers, anybody questioned approaching them at all. I think we should remove all barriers from that because we've got, we've got great cops. And I don't think we should, I would be in favor of removing them from the police vehicles because it's just up to interpretation so much that it could cause more problems than it really helps. And I don't see how it really helps anything. And especially within the events of this past week. So I would be in favor of asking our police officers to remove them from the vehicles.
However, those.
I looked up some information if you want me to read something that might help. Go ahead, Fran, or you want me to go?
No, go ahead.
During the Unite the Right rally in Charlottesville in 2017, the thin blue line flag was used by white nationalist groups to symbolize support for police and opposition to Black Lives Matter movement. After a backlash from the public, the flag was taken down in November of 2019. And then there's this other thing that describes why the police have the flags on their cars. The thin blue line, American flag represents law enforcement and is flown to show support for the men and women who put their lives on the line every day to protect us. This symbol is hailed as the proud front for a national movement promoting compassion and support for our nation's police officers. So that's why our guys have it on their car. I assume they're not white nationalists, but, but yeah, you could see where it's the same exact flag. So I don't know.
I don't know how long those flags have been on our police cars, but they have been on them for a while and I don't think anyone ever notices them.
Right.
And I, you know, I am in favor of leaving them. They are, you know, supporting the police. And I think, you know, people can read anything into anything and we can have a definition. You know, we can change definitions on a regular basis. Black Lives Matter, Blue Lives Matter, in my opinion, All Lives Matter. You know, that's the way our cars have been for a while. And I don't think, because there's an incident right now, that we should jump and change it. And then next month, when there's another incident, we're gonna jump and change something else. I don't think anybody ever put those up there to be any kind of racist other than to define our policemen. And I think we should, we should stand by them. And I see no reason to ask them to take those off. Those cars have been painted like that for a while. I would venture to say it's been a couple of years. I don't know how long. But it would be, you know, I don't think we should just ask them to change it because right now people are reading, reading one definition of it. And then, you know, there are different definitions and different meanings. And I'm in favor of just leaving them, you know, just leaving them the way. I don't think that they're gonna put our policeman in danger. I think it shows support for them. So I'm happy with.
There are a lot of things that we do to support our police officers. There are a lot of things we do and we have good police officers. My worry is that if, if, if the thin blue line, the Blue Lives Matter flag is on our police cars, that when people are in need of help from the police, we don't need to put anything between that person that's in need of help and the police, whether it's.
But that has never happened here.
Or anything. I think.
That has never happened. No one has ever looked at a police car and said, oh my God, I can't call them because they have a blue flag on them. This is, that has never happened here. I don't think it's going to happen. I don't think people are gonna look at it and think twice about calling the police. They know the police here. And I don't see that.
No.
What happened to Marie?
She's here. She's here.
It says Lauren now.
Thoughts, Marie?
Dave, could you send us the email? I, I, I'm afraid I've never noticed it. I've never been sensitive to it. And I'd like to hear what the letter writer has to say.
I'll read it to you right now. It's not that long. There's two sections, so. Along with you, Marie, I've never even noticed it, so that's whatever. I have to say, it doesn't mean something. Let's see, dear Marie, I've been a resident of the village for about five years now. And this time I found it puzzling. In this time, I found it puzzling that police cruisers are allowed to have the American flag with the thin blue line displayed on it. Even if this symbol stands for what the Putnam County Sheriff's Office says, which is that the thin blue line represents the police force holding back chaos, which is debatable. It has certainly been appropriated by the Blue Lives Blue Lives Matter movement, an ill-formed reaction to the Black Lives Matter movement and actual movement. My family is of mixed heritage. For all that I love about our village, the one thing that troubles me is that it isn't all that diverse. Seeing a symbol such as the Blue Lives Matter flag displayed on our village cruiser sends the wrong message to both a diverse array of tourists that visit on a weekly basis and to people of color that could hopefully at some point soon be potential residents. I want people of all color to feel welcome to our town. I hope you can find a way to diplomatically navigate this growing concern.
I think it's a legitimate concern.
Well, I think I would take it excepted to a few things in the letter. I mean, whether or not the decal is I find the village incredibly welcoming. I don't think that if a family wants to move here, that they're not welcome. And so, you know, saying saying that in the letter, you know, I don't agree with that. I mean, I don't know. I just have a problem with that. Also, I don't know what's the growing concern. Is there a growing concern about that we don't know about about these decals? Because this is the first I've heard of it. And and word gets around you, so you usually find out about things. Again, I'm not saying the importance or whatever. I just, you know, in that in the context or the way this letter was written, you know, it seems like, you know, what he's saying is that, you know, people aren't welcome here and some point soon, maybe they will be, hopefully, and
I don't agree with that.
Very good picture of the village.
I do know that I do know some people of color who have been who have experienced if not out-and-out racism, kind of an unwelcoming I don't know. I'm not expressing it well, but I, you know, I have heard of incidents where people of color have not felt comfortable here. Either visiting or, you know, also a next-door neighbor one time who was, you know, it was a mixed family with mixed children and you know, they were not treated all that well. So I don't know. If we can take those barriers down, those triggers that you know, that keep people from being comfortable here, I I'm all for it. It doesn't seem like a big concession to make. Especially considering the cataclysm that we're experiencing nationally right now. Maybe it doesn't matter to other people as much as I feel it, but I feel it pretty strongly. I don't. And also, in my discussions with Larry Burke, I mean, I said I told him, when I talked to him last Saturday, that you know, when all this was starting to happen, I just said, you know, those guys in Minneapolis have set good guys like you back years and years and years. And, you know, all of us know that all police officers are not racists and don't treat people of color badly. And that there are a lot of police officers that are just wonderful people like the guys that we have. But I, you know, I don't, I think it could potentially endanger our police officers. And, you know, when something is so up to is so easily misinterpreted by both residents and visitors alike, I just don't think it helps us as a village. It helps us as a community. I don't think it helps us as a a village to encourage those divisions. And if we can make a small concession to encourage people coming together, I I think that's something worthwhile. And I think we can just talk to Larry about it and see how he feels. And go with his you know, his take on it, I think would probably be accurate. You know, and just ask him how they feel about it. It's not to it's not to dismiss the police and the concerns and the and the dedication that they approach their job with. It's just why throw up a barrier? You know, if it's gonna be interpreted as a racist thing or or whatever, that's a potential barrier that we don't need and it's not helpful. So I don't know. I think we should ask Larry his opinion about it and just discuss it with him and see how he feels. If he feels strongly about it, then leave it. But if not, I think it's worth a discussion with our officer in charge.
I believe Larry's coming on to this meeting. But I sort of feel that it's a shame that we have to apologize for something that that supports our police because someone's reading into it a different way. I don't, I think, you know, we have we have something on our police cars that supports police in general, not just ours, but police in general, who ninety-nine percent of them or maybe ninety-five percent of them are good. You know, and yet we have to apologize and take it off because because someone doesn't like the symbol. You know, the symbol is read different ways by by different people. It is meant, it wasn't put on our police cars to be offensive to anybody. And I don't believe, as I saw somebody putting on, that those symbols have just popped up. I think they've been there a while. And from what somebody else said, I think somebody said they had been there for about five years or they've been here for five years and noticed them. So so I don't think that we should, you know, sort of hide a symbol that supports our police. You know, I'm not saying don't support something else, but I'm saying why do we have to not support these because we have to support these?
I don't think it's mutually exclusive. I think there are lots of ways we can support our police that aren't potentially divisive. And I believe that symbol because it's it's been used in, you know, because it was used in Charlottesville and because people misinterpret it. I think potentially, and it's not an apology, Fran. It's we're not apologizing to anybody. All we're doing is being sensitive to the current events that we're living in. And we're, I think it's important to make sure that we don't put any barriers between our police and and the people that they serve. And I see that as a potentially divisive symbol. I mean, we had this discussion when I was growing up in the South. There used to be Confederate flags on police vehicles in my hometown. And they asked them to take it off. And a lot of people said, well, what about our heritage and all that rock? And but, you know, ultimately, it came down to if we're going to be a welcoming community, you know, we just avoid stuff like that that's that has the potential for misinterpretation. So I'll just leave it at that. You know, I'm in favor of asking Larry if he would be willing to take them off, considering the climate that we're living in right now. You know, it's not a judgment that our cops are bad or all cops are bad or or anything. It's not anything like that. It's like why don't we just do small things to avoid conflict? And I think, you know, in terms like that, I think Larry might agree. So ask him.
Yeah, I think he's trying to get into this meeting so we could ask him when he comes on.
Yeah.
And we should.
One thing I think, and I know what you're saying, Lynn, I just wouldn't compare this flag to the Confederate flag.
No.
I don't think there's any wiggle room with a Confederate flag.
Well.
I hear what you're saying.
That was twenty-five years ago. So, you know, in that climate in the South, yes, it was, you know, but I I grew up in a very progressive town in the South. And so they were talking about this twenty-five, thirty years ago. So you know, and twenty-five, thirty years ago, people didn't see the Confederate flag quite as quite as negatively as they did, as they do now. So and, you know, I was never happy with it. So and I don't equate the two flags at all. I don't. But, you know, it was a similar situation. So.
I don't understand why the police adopted that, knowing the history of it. It doesn't make sense to me. Like, why would they do that in the first place?
I don't know when they put it on there and
I've never noticed it, to be honest with you. But to choose a symbol that has a history that is steeped in racism, shall we say, to put, to represent the support of a police department, just doesn't make any sense to me. Why would they choose that symbol? Is it a mistake? Did they not know the history of it? Or did they have it before and the assholes, pardon my French, took it from them and used it as their symbol? You know, it doesn't make any sense. So I don't think it belongs there. It doesn't belong on our cars, not with what's going on in our world. In January, the cops killed more people in this country than have been killed in the entire history of England. In one month. That's not made up. That happened. So there's some stuff going on here. And we shouldn't do anything but try and end it. And if this stupid bumper sticker pisses people off, then take it off the car. Why are we even talking about it? If it has two meanings, pick a pick a sticker that has a meaning that's more positive. That can't be seen as well, if Blue Lives Matter, then that means Black Lives don't matter. Because that's something like that. I don't understand at all, but I don't think we should have it on the cars. Get something else. Get an American flag that says we support the police under it. You know, why do we have to have this?
We have police shields all over the cars. We have protect and serve all over the cars. Why not? Why not just put an American flag on the car? Not to mention the fact that that it's it's really kind of bad form to take our American flag and represent it differently. That actually is against the US Flag Code. So, you know, not to split hairs or anything, but you know, I think just just put an American flag on there if you want to have a flag on the police car. You know, don't put symbols on police cars that are going to be divisive. Put a shield that says, you know, Cold Spring Police Officers to Protect and Serve. That's what we are dedicated to. Something that celebrates the dedication of our cops to our community. You know, that everybody understands. If there's a symbol on there that some people think is divisive, then it's divisive. So I just don't think we need to do that. I think it's bad. I'm done talking about it. That's all. But you know how I feel. So.
We'll see what Larry says.
What's that?
Let's see what Larry says.
I think Larry's take is probably the most valuable.
I think that's a good suggestion to talk to Larry and then go from there. And that's not saying that we should totally agree with him either. So I think we should, you know, Steve and Lynn both have good arguments and valid points. And so I'd like to hear, you know, what Larry has to say. If he's willing to take it down, I'm fine with that. If if not, I think we should discuss it more or we should, you know, we should take everything, let it digest a little bit and move ahead with it. You know, I definitely, I've never seen it. But then again, you know, I don't know. I think I'm pretty hip to what's going on in the world. So I don't know. But I guess if other people see that symbol and know it's there and they walk by, then they see it and they're going to react differently than I. So is everyone agreeing? We talk to Larry, see where it goes. We we discussed this. Set in a little bit more.
Sure. I want I want to read more about the whole thing anyway. I don't know. I'd like to know more about the whole blue line thing and all that anyway. So I'll read more about it. You know, become educated.
See more information, we can dig up and see. And, you know, I agree, we definitely don't want to fan the flames that are already are burning our whole nation. So I definitely don't want to be doing that. So anyway. It's a sad situation. I won't get into it. There's people that can be more articulate about what's going on in the nation than than I am. But it's incredibly disturbing and I can't believe I just can't believe where we are and how low we're going and how where the bottom is. Some people have said there isn't a bottom and that maybe that's true because we are not headed in the right direction. Hopefully, hopefully, we can find the leaders that change, turn this around. Because this is this is just a terrible situation, not a reflection on everyone. And and so it's terrible. Anyway, like I said, there are people way more articulate that they can speak to it. But I'd like to just say from my point of view and being the mayor of our little town that what I saw on those films was probably I think repugnant is a word Cuomo used today, and I think that sums it up pretty much that I don't think I've ever seen anything that horrible. So whatever.
I think Larry's about to be on, if he's not on now, so.
I'm in. I don't know if you can hear him.
So I don't know if you've been listening to the discussion or not. It's about the decal with the blue line on it. And some people are, you know, take it as a negative, you know, symbol. And we received a communication and looking at the light-ups on little chats, people agreeing with that. So we needed your perspective on it.
People don't understand what the blue line means. It does not mean the blue line of silence. It means that we are respecting all of the officers that were killed in the line of duty. As in the military would do that in general with the American flag. The reason I put that on there, I actually asked everybody in the department if they felt disrespected by any way because it's not an American flag. And normally, it's an American flag put on a a government vehicle. I asked some veterans, including Vinnie DiMato, who is a veteran. And he saw no problem with it. There are certain parts of the military that actually have different types of American flags for their unit, especially the, like the Navy SEALs or one of those, one of those units. And they have a black American flag sometimes with, you know, a unit color on it or stuff like that. So that was the main reason I decided to put it on the vehicles. And again, I think it's a knee-jerk reaction personally to what has happened. And I understand it. And, you know, and they're looking, people see it that way. And they might take offensive offense to it now, but that's the reasoning that I originally put those on. And when I did put those on, I had a complaint from a veteran about three, four months ago, asking me why it wasn't a regular American flag. And I told him exactly what I just told you. And he was, and finally, he was in agreement with it. So I see it on both sides. And that's really why I did what I did do.
Larry, seemingly that flag has some negative meanings and people are upset about the fact, and Steve can explain it better because Steve just did some research on that that flag has had some negative meanings via to it being a Blue Lives Matter flag. And that's, I think, what people are taking offense to. Steve, can you?
It's the exact flag of a white national group. So that came out in response to the Black Lives Matter thing.
It actually came, it actually came out from retired law enforcement officer that put that flag out. So I don't know where
Oh, they used it.
They might have hijacked it.
I don't know who had it first. I have no idea. I'd like to find out. I will. But that's what bothers people about it.
And again, it's unfortunate that it's coming to light now when it's been on the police cars probably for almost a year already. So that's that's my point. It's a knee-jerk reaction. I'm not looking to offend anybody with that on the police cars. But also, I'm going to push back a little bit on on removing it immediately. It's just my opinion. I will be guided by what you guys decide. But also, again, like I said, it's in memory of those officers who have been who have been killed in the line of duty. And that's why I decided to put those on the police cars.
I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at some of the comments in the chat section. If you click on it, a lot of people are very offended by that. You know, and I'll be honest with you, I don't haven't noticed them. And seemingly, the offense, according to somebody, is not just current, although nobody has ever said it before that I've heard of. So, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't, I don't know anything about it. I mean, Steve is doing some research on it. You know, where it came from, where it, who started it. But the offense, I guess, as you said, because of what's going on right now, is just sort of being heightened.
I can understand the emotion. Believe me, I can understand emotion on everybody that saw the events of what happened recently. And and believe me, we And and believe me, we we all have our own opinions. Um and I'm sure that nobody agrees with what happened. Uh uh that incident that happened uh last week, uh I do not, I do not agree with it. They should be brought up on charges, all the officers, and I get that uh on from my personal opinion being in law enforcement over thirty years. Uh again, um I also know that the American flag disturbs people uh in general, uh that they get offense on that also. So, you know, what do we do here? Do we take off the American flag? Do we just take, you know, if that's, you know, if that's going to be the answer, then, you know, you look at the sheriff's cars, they actually have in God and for God and country. Um that offends some people too, I would take it, but uh they have that on their police cars. Just some, just to point something out.
Okay, well, I I think what we talked about was giving this a little time to digest. Um I I think that um, well, I I think we just need a little bit more time to to think about this, uh meaning like a week or something, not not like a a long period of time. But uh Steve wanted to do a little research. I, this is all new to me, so uh, you know, I'd like to do a little more research myself. Um I think if it's something that's inflammatory or can be seen both ways, then uh then why have it on there? But uh I'd like to get more information on it too. And, you know, you know, I've I've had a great relationship with Larry and uh and uh I definitely uh want to keep that going. And I want to totally let them know that we're supporting police. And if this is, you know, I don't want this to be divisive the other way. Okay, take that off. And now we don't appreciate you. We're taken that way because you could read it as that also. So um I would just like to give it a little more time. I think under the current circumstances, if we take a decal off the car, um I don't think the world's going to come to an end. That's for sure. I definitely just, I want to do the right thing here. So, you know, I'd like to give it a little more time. If everybody's okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Fine.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Sounds good to me also. I I appreciate it. Like I said, we're just trying to do the right thing here and for everybody. Um and we can come, we can come up with something, I think, uh to to help out, whatever we can do.
Okay. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Hey, uh where were we? Oh, we're on the resolution. Or was there anything on the other? Uh I, we're going to get.
Is Larry supposed to be on for something else? Or did he just come on on request?
No, he can't. I requested him on.
Oh, okay. I thought we had business with him. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
So, yeah, we're up to the uh the resolution once again um on removing uh removing merchandise and signs uh, you know, for the for the for the foreseeable future until uh, you know, we see how things work out and uh with the reopenings. Jeff had came up with a resolution working off of what John had uh drafted for us uh regarding the parks. Um and then John didn't get back until, you know, eleventh hour and changed that. And then there were some things that I saw in that that I didn't think were were clear enough. So then it was changed again. So I think we've seen about four or five different versions. I think um the only change is, uh and correct me if I'm wrong here, Jeff, um I think it was on the second page. There's a whereas. So whereas the village usually allows store owners uh to place freestanding signs. Um and John changed that to and other items like umbrellas, planters, benches, et cetera. Uh I just wanted to be more specific on that. Uh so he added that. And then down on towards the end, the now there, therefore be resolved. Number one, um he changed it to declares that store owners are no longer permitted to place any signage or items of any kind uh in the village-owned sidewalks. So that was just a change there also. That cleared everyone?
Yes.
The one thing I might add is it's to is store owners the appropriate word? Or is it just people in general, residents or or?
Merchants.
Merchants. Uh can any, uh does that mean anyone else that's not a merchant can put something out on the sidewalk?
I think the more appropriate word would be business, business owners.
Well, this would include people that live on Main Street too, right? They decide to put something out there.
Trying to keep the streets clean. Uh I don't know if anyone else does that. It's not a business owner, but.
Yeah.
Sometimes you would have a a vendor who puts wears or puts a table out or puts signs out for an event or um something to that effect. So maybe we want to be more general.
They would have to come before us though to get that permission, right?
They should.
So change, change that to businesses, business owners?
Why don't we just say um
Merchants.
hereby declares that um we can, uh we no longer, you know, no one is permitted any signage. Or there's, take out the store owners, declares that um no longer.
How about the village usually uh allows the placement of small freestanding signs in the village-owned sidewalks?
Where are you at, Marie? Sorry.
In the next, sorry, second page, second whereas.
Okay, yeah. And and your suggestion is what?
Uh the village usually allows the placement of small freestanding signs. And then in the third whereas, right below that. Um so pursuant to one oh eight twenty-four B of the village code, uh does the display of merchandise is permitted in an area not to exceed three feet. They get away from store owners or merchants or whatever.
Okay, I agree.
Okay.
And then as far as the uh now, now therefore, number one.
Um that doesn't refer to a store owner or a merchant. I I have there, for the benefit of the general public's health, safety and welfare, the village board hereby declares that no signage of any kind or merchandise of any kind shall be placed on the village-owned sidewalks along Main Street. It seems to be reasonable.
Okay, does that have signage or items or is it just a signage? Because John sent the last minute uh edit.
It says um that signage or items and or merchandise of any kind.
Okay, so you've got it covered.
Yep.
You read that again and read um the way you said it because the one I'm looking at says um store owners are no longer permitted. For the therefore, number one. What I'm looking at for the benefit of the general public's health, safety and welfare, the village board hereby declares that store owners are no longer permitted to place any signage, but you said something else.
What I have, uh, sorry, I I may not have the right version. Jeff, what is number one say?
It's for the benefit of the general public's health, safety and welfare. The village board hereby declares that no signage or items of any kind and or merchandise of any kind on the village, on village-owned sidewalks can be placed on village-owned sidewalks along Main Street.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We had old versions.
Okay, is everyone good with this?
Yeah, good. Yes.
So I'll I'll make a motion to uh pass a resolution twelve twenty with edits uh that we just made.
Second.
Um the roll call. Michael still with us?
Yes.
Yes, I am. Uh Mayor Morandi?
Uh about I?
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Okay, so so the reason for that, I mean, just I I think it should, it's it's pretty obvious. Um and the certain, in the current environment, if there's uh stores when they're opened, um if there are a lot of people, they're going to have to have lines, which is going to take up space. When the restaurant's open, it'll definitely be a problematic. Um so we're just trying to keep the streets as clean as possible for people to social distance as much as possible. And that if we keep, uh you know, if we have uh sandwich boards, uh you know, to, you know, moving out closer and closer into the middle of the uh street, that just uh takes away some of that space, which is pretty valuable right now. So that was the reasoning for it and uh everything behind that. So we will send out uh, we'll send out um a letter to the merchants and uh asking them please uh to resist uh or to stop putting uh sandwich boards and merchandise out um until things clear up a bit more. And we'll revisit and go back to our village code. Okay, um next discussion on resuming uh village business, uh resuming uh village business, uh village hall. Um I have a few notes, so I'll just read out. Um I think starting, uh you know, I asked Brandon, it's the way we're reading it. It's like uh we could reopen with say with phase two.
Yes.
At fifty percent of capacity. Is that right?
That's right.
So it's basically doing what we're doing right now. So uh you know, for so for the short term, um you know, I I just, I I just think that uh Jeff should work with the staff and and come up with uh appropriate usage of the village hall so that, you know, whatever's the safest. It seems to be things have been working and uh I I would leave it up to Jeff, but if people have ideas on how to reopen, I guess one of the things is reopening to the public and and do we want to do that right away or how do we do that?
Well, how do you feel about it, Jeff? You're the one that has to be with all these people.
You know, I'm one thing kind of hoping people have gotten used to the fact that everything can be done via email or telephone. So that when we do reopen, there's not a flood of people come in. I think the only exception comes with building permits and that process. But I think if we follow the guidelines that the governor sets forth, limiting the number of people, maintaining social distancing, everybody has to wear a mask. Um whether that's people coming into the office, you know, um whether it's residents or store owners coming into the office or it's the actual employees themselves, we maintain we'll be okay. Um Bugsy is going to be putting up a plexiglass, piece of plexiglass over the window at my desk so that people, we can communicate through that. Um the door will stay closed to limit people from being able to walk into the office. So um I thought we should be okay. It was after play by ear. By thinking that we need to put some markings down, make sure people maintain six feet um and wearing the mask and doing the right thing that they've been asked to do over the last two and a half months. If they do that, we should be fine. It's when they don't do that that the problems will begin. And I have no problem telling people to get out. So Fran will tell you, I'm I'm very good about, no, there's too many people or where's your mask and stuff, so.
When do you think you, when do you think you'd start or when we feel comfortable starting, you know, opening it like phase two, phase three? I mean, there's no, there's no rush. I I I don't feel, I mean, we do have building stuff that has, that's bigger, that has, you know, more documents that have to be delivered that aren't going to the slot, but.
Right, and that we could, we could do that by appointment. We could even do that now by appointment. If, you know, we could phase it in and starting Tuesday, you know, do things by appointment. We've already kind of made the announcement that for taxpayers paying their tax bills, we will only be open Friday mornings from nine to twelve for that. Through the end of the month, we could, anything else could be by appointment only and then come July first.
Okay, so work for July first?
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
I I did talk to uh, I talked to Judge Castello last Friday. Um he's working with Larry, uh Larry Burke. And uh, you know, he has, he's developing a plan. He's, I mean, he, he's got it pretty much together. So, you know, talking about court reopenings, um some of the measures would be hit up multiple court dates instead of just one. And also uh individuals would be sent, right now, it's you'd get the ticket would say be there seven o'clock or whatever time it is, and there was no specific time. So what they're going to do is every case will have a certain time that they will come. So it'll be every fifteen or twenty minutes I feel he's comfortable with. So on the ticket or on the return or when they have to uh show up for court, it'll have a specific time on it. And the only people that will be left in the village hall, not just the courtroom, will be just the people that are involved in that case. Representative, the person and uh and the police officer. And uh so there'll be a police there usually, and he's trying to also line up all the police. Whatever tickets are given out by one policeman, he's trying to do that all in one night or work with the police so that it's not, you know, all over the place. So.
So he has signs of court date to a particular policeman when he writes tickets. So he'll always write tickets for that court date?
Uh no, I guess what, no, not for the court date. Whatever tickets come in, whatever, the officers that are responsible for those tickets, he's going to consolidate so that that person comes in.
I got it. Okay.
It's for the catch up.
Yeah, it's for the catch up because we'll be waiting. Hasn't been much going on lately, so.
Yeah.
One of the, the only silver lining. Uh let's see, um as far as the uh the village, as far as our board meetings, um and as far as the other uh all of our other boards, the HDRB and planning and zoning, um I think we just uh start, we're Jeff said, working on setting up accounts. Each one will be in a bit individual account for each board, keep everything separate. I think Jeff, you said there, how much is it a month or for a year?
It's a hundred and forty dollars for a year for a Zoom account.
So this would give us unlimited access uh to the boards or time. It's not restricted. Um so I guess once Jeff gets that together, uh we'll send out a message to the chairs. I'll send something out and tell them, give them the green light. And then they'll have to coordinate with Jeff on times and dates and uh how they want to set it up. And then we can advertise or, you know, if we change or whatever. Also, we give them the option, if it's a small group or they have to meet, they could meet in the uh courtroom if we set up dates. If it's only small, you know, groups, uh so that's another thing we could do. So we'll just wait. We'll do everything by Zoom. Um Jeff will get that together and then we'll contact shares and uh I know there's a some backlog there too, so. We'll start working that out. Uh next we have the our own, uh the CUC. Um that the review of the CUC by our board, uh we need to resume that. Um I think we could do two meetings a month. Uh things are pretty crazy and hectic right now for me. I don't know about everyone else, but uh two, two times a month or twice a month is going to be uh I should be able to handle that. If everyone's good with that, we can set up dates for that.
I think that, I think that doing it by Zoom may be a problem because we are also using the Google documents to look at, and that would mean toggling between the two. Which could be cumbersome or bumpy. Um we had, we had talked about uh in-person meetings where each of us would bring our own laptops as opposed to gathering uh around Jeff's desk.
That's off limits. I'll tell you right now.
Okay, so if we could consider meeting in the village in the uh courtroom um with the distancing that we were using in the um April and May timeframes, I think that would be best as a suggestion.
How's everyone else feel about meeting in the courtroom? I mean, there's, if it's just us, we can definitely, you know, spread out.
It works anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. As long as, as long as we have power and and technology, we should be okay.
And we'll film those meetings. I don't know. Is there a way, Jeff, we can zoom those just for participants to ask questions during them? Or no, is that just?
Probably not.
Well, if they're open, we can have open meetings um and then just limit how many people can actually come in space wise.
Problematic if we, we don't really have that much space. I mean, it's hard to keep our six foot distance in the uh courtroom just for five of us. And if the papers come and Michael, it's fairly tight, so.
I don't think anybody's going to come.
I was just going to say, our our history for the first three months of the year is that we had no attendees for any of the five meetings.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, everything, we're going to go to a public hearing for everything and uh it's all going to be filmed. So I I'm comfortable with that. And we're not going to, nothing's going to be done until we have public hearings. And then like you said, we have the, like I said, the uh, everything will be filmed, so I think we should be safe. Um if everyone's comfortable with that, Marie, if you want to work on some dates and then throw them out to us, you don't have to do that now, but.
I'll talk to Jeff about it tomorrow and send everybody an email.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um the other thing, I mean, we talked about the, oh, sorry, Lyndy, were you going to say something?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm just agreeing.
Your, your thing is very sensitive. You just like, you know, make a whisper and and your face is up. It's funny.
Sorry. Sorry.
No, no problem. As far as the office, I talked to Michelle. She basically is coming in now, you know, not as much as she used to, but she'll just resume stuff and we'll work, again, let Jeff work out when she's there. You know, she was doing half days, so you can resume that. Next is municipal lot, you know, when we want to open that up, but phase two is going to open retail. I don't see why, why we wouldn't have the, have the, have the parking lot open.
That sounds reasonable. We have a new telephonic vendor for the parking meter. The signs have been posted on the meter. So we should be good to go with that.
Good. So I think parks, parks are going to start open. I think they started opening, if I understood Linda Cooper right, Monday or yesterday. And they're going to just start phasing that in. Little Stony Point was going to stay closed. I'm not sure about their parking, but the beach itself in that area, I think was going to stay closed, but just, I don't know for how long. But they were opening, starting to open up parks this week. So we're going to be dealing with that also. It'll be back, back to normal.
Dave, you're going to have Bugsy remove the cones from the park lot?
I'll do that when we open up the municipal lot.
Right, great.
And the only one, so then, then we discuss our parks. Todd's Park seems problematic to me, opening that. I don't know how we monitor how many people are in there and you can't sanitize, I mean, you'd have to have someone there constantly sanitizing as somebody goes in and out. Feelings on Todd's Park?
Have there been any complaints?
No, it's not that I heard of. I'm sure people have the open.
No.
I haven't received any.
Now, I, I thought I saw that Cuomo was going to open summer camps, day, summer day camps at the end of the month. June, was it June 29?
June 23rd, I thought I, some, I heard.
And I didn't see any, I didn't watch the press conference today. Were there any restrictions on the summer day camps in terms of number of attendees?
I didn't listen to it. I started listening to it. But he did, he did very little about New York forward and then talked about other things. But if I, if I had children or if my grandchildren come, I don't think I would let them into Todd's Park because, I mean, well, while day camps have staff that they can sanitize every time somebody moves, we don't have that. Or moves around, you know, or sneezes or whatever young children do, we don't have the ability to do that. And those, you know, you know how children are, their mouths are on everything, their hands are on everything, their hands are in their mouth. I wouldn't, until we can safely sanitize all that equipment and hope it stays sanitized, I wouldn't open Todd's Park.
Or, or alternatively, open it once it is understood that the threat to children is not as significant as the threat to adults. Right? I, as you say, I can't imagine sanitizing the tot lot. It's just, that's out of the question.
There's like 700 plastic cars. So I can't imagine who's going to clean all that.
There's, isn't there a group that oversees that? I mean, I realize it's our property, but is there a group that oversees that?
Friends of the tot, friends of the tot lot or friends of the tot mark. And by the way, today at one o'clock, deer were walking through it. One o'clock.
I hope they were six feet apart.
I thought they were supposed to be nocturnal.
Yeah, not anymore.
Now, who's, is there like somebody that runs the Friends of Tot Park?
They, they, they did work there last year, Jeff. Do you have any documentation on that?
Yeah. I can't remember the name, but I'll ask Andrea, she knows.
Okay, Andrea Hudson.
Yeah.
Is there Ruth, Ruth Ann's son or something also involved over there?
It might be. Well, we'll find out who's there, maybe contact them and see if we can work, see what they think and see how we can do something safely. But for the time being, I think we should keep that closed. If everyone agrees.
Yes.
Dockside and the dock, phase two, if retail's open, do we wait till phase three? It's four weeks, three weeks? I don't know. Feelings on those parks? Everything's going to be open. I don't know what we're doing.
If we open them, are there going to be any regulations? I mean, like in the city when they opened the beaches, you know, people couldn't picnic, they couldn't go swimming, they could walk and they could browse and stuff like that, but they couldn't really settle down. If we open the dock, if we open dockside, are we going to have any regulations to keep people separated or just big signs that said, use your head? And then the people do whatever, or, you know, I mean, that's the only thing. If we open them, they're going to come in in droves, which is fine, you know. But then, you know, you know, maybe the sign should say, you know, you're responsible for your own health. So use your head and stay six feet away. But I don't know.
It could make mandatory too, I think.
Maybe mask mandatory down there would be fine. And maybe you don't want people picnicking right away. You don't want, you know, people sitting or no sports and no picnicking. And just let people stroll and let them sit and relax for a while. That's fine.
Well, on Saturday, I noticed a number of people picnicking on St. Mary's Lawn and a number of people picnicking at the tot lot around the 9/11 memorial, which kind of surprised me because that's really out of the way.
Okay, so we'll just hold off on, or how do you want, with phase two is Wednesday's two?
The ninth of June.
What is it?
June 9th, next, a week from tonight. Yeah. Next, next Tuesday.
It's still no restaurants. Takeout online, right.
So we wait till phase two and then open parks?
I would, and just put signs that say, you know, NASCAR required and no, no sports, no, you know, or something to that effect, no picnicking. So you don't, eliminate some groups.
All right. We'll think what we can do for signage. We're keeping the sign businesses and.
I think that sign that you developed, Dave, was really good. Why don't we just put one of those, several of those down at the, at the dock and also on dockside?
Right. Okay. Yeah, I agree.
Like the entrance, on either side of the entrance to dockside?
Right.
I thought those signs were great. It gets the message across.
Hey, Lynn.
Do I have something on my nose?
Maria has an itchy nose. Okay, so Mayor's Park parking and the other, and all the other parks will open up the phase two. When we get to phase two, we open everything up.
Except for the top one.
Except for Todd's Park. Okay.
Oh, Maria, I just got you.
Got you.
That's not what I'm after, you know.
That doesn't work. The other question on opening up is Eko, and when we bring him back, I think he called Larry and wanted to know what's going on with his summer job or, or little ticket keeper.
I think we should have him on.
Yeah.
I agree.
Weekend or?
Yeah. Have him on this weekend.
Okay. Well, tell Larry. All right. That's all I got for this stuff. I am going to have, if everyone agrees, and we talked about moving some of the benches. It's not being selective. Wherever there is, well, where there's restaurants and there's no sidewalk, there's no way we can have a bench there. I mean, when people are going to have to line up and, you know, waiting to get into stores, wherever there was like a bottleneck or, or short or sidewalks that were narrow and where businesses are usually heavy, having Bugsy remove those ones. So there's, there's several places. Most of the stuff on the north side, we have a lot of space there. The exception of probably, you know, once you get down past Fair Street. But the other, the other ones on the other side, there's really limited space. So I, I'm going to take that now. Also, I talked to Jen Zorick, there's the tree in front of Hudson Hills that's dead again. It's a pit that is basically a urinal for dogs. I don't think anyone's going to live there. If it has, I mean, I don't think any tree is going to live there. No human definitely couldn't. But I've gone by there. It just, it reeks sometimes. And so I talked to Jen and she agreed we'd take the tree out because it's dead, but not reclaim the good one. And, and then put bricks in there or. So that's what I have on that. So I guess next is the discussion on reopening the businesses. Do we want to, do we want to do the approvals and then open this up, discuss this ourselves and then open everything up to the public that was said tonight? Instead of talking about the reopening and then going to the others without discussing, because I think some other people probably chime in on a few of the things we discussed tonight.
Yeah, let's finish.
So we'll skip to the approval of the bills.
Okay. Okay. I move to approve batch number 5585 for a total amount of $26,508.84.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead and list.
I move to approve batch number 5593 for a total amount of $41,139.82.
I will second that. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is approval of minutes 5:12:20. I'll make a motion to accept or approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And final approval of minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for 5:21:20.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you trustees for making corrections before the meeting. It's always helpful, moves things along. Okay, so the, the big topic tonight, and the board will discuss this, and everyone that's been patient and hanging on on the sidebar here will give you time to speak. So next is the discussion on reopening the businesses and cancellation of large events. I think the first thing we could discuss fairly quickly would be the cancellation of large events. We discussed this, seemed to agree on it last week. We have, like I said, two emails or communications from the two organizers pleading their case. So Marie, Marie would like to discuss this more or we kind of talked and so I thought, you know, we should discuss more if she'd like to. And Marie, you're up.
Okay, so I reviewed John Shear's proposal, his outline, his requirements for the festival that he's planning for July 25th and 26th. The first thing that struck me is he's limiting the number of tickets to be sold for each two, for each day to 500 people. He will have no, only advanced sales, no sales at the gate. He's limiting, like I said, to 500 people per event. He's maintaining a list of the names and addresses of each person who is purchasing a ticket in advance. So if contact tracing is required, he'll be able to do that. He has a list of requirements for the layout for each vendor, which requires at least, at least six feet distance for every person going to the table, biostick shields in front of the tables, vendors have to wear masks, people will not be admitted without masks, people will only be admitted after they use hand sanitizer. So my thinking is that he's planning a, a very well managed, safely run event with the caveat that he will cancel in June if, if the factors indicate that the safety of his guests or the public that will be attending are in jeopardy. In looking at the number of people he's, he's going to admit, it's probably the same number or fewer than visit Main Street once we get to phase two or three. And the events, the events will occur only after, given the current force and speed of the phases. Phase four starts on July 7th. So he will be two plus weeks, sorry, yes, two plus weeks after phase four. And so I, I don't see that, that he, his events will be endangering any more people than would be coming to Main Street on a busy Saturday or Sunday. So I think we should reconsider permit, permitting him to have his event. I've not seen what the food and wine fest would be, what their plans are for the food and wine fest, which I believe is also in July, but I, as I say, I haven't seen any, any plans that they may have. But I think John's plan is, is very reasonable. One of the things that he points out is that people spend a lot of money to attend his event, and they tend to get there on time and stay until the end. So they are probably not going to be moving from the restricted area on Fair Street to other areas of the village.
Marie, could you refresh my memory of the date? I know originally it was a July date.
July 25th and July 26th is what John is proposing.
And then there's also another date.
And he's got two, two events in September.
I, I, I just looked at his plan for July, Fran.
You know, I'm leery of the fact that that's two weeks after we run into phase four and we don't have any phase four guidelines at all from New York State yet for anybody, for any part of the state.
Current, but we should, we should have those by the end of June. Since July 7th is the date when phase four will begin. Again, given current force and speed, that's the date for phase four for our area.
I would hope we have them way before that because the upper part of the state comes into phase four before us.
That's a good point. Yep.
Would you say the 26th and the 27th? I'm sorry, Mary.
25th and 26th.
Um, I would be more comfortable.
And he's willing to cancel if any of the, the data that we get in the June timeframe indicates that that is not a reasonable thing to do.
I would be very, much more comfortable if we could push it into September, October. And, you know, I mean, at this point, I believe like John has moved it from June to July. So I don't believe he has vendors. There used to be an Oktoberfest or that ran like late September with the Knights of Columbus. And so, you know, if we could move this and grab a date late September, early October, I think it would be, you know, I'd be much more comfortable with it to me.
Keep in mind that we're going to be having our community day.
I realize that.
First weekend in September. And we typically have a couple of thousand people.
Well, that, that's another issue that I had, I was thinking of. Our community day may or may not happen, depending on the same issues that I'm bringing up. I mean, we're not going to say it's good for us, but it's not good for John or not good for Laura. The community day, I think we have some time still to, to cancel. But, you know, if John wants to lock in a date in September, late September, early October and have like more like an Oktoberfest, I'd be a lot more comfortable thinking that maybe by then, you know, we have some guidelines we'll know because we have no guidelines in terms of opening, opening large events yet. At this point, what I'm seeing for small areas for retail is 50% of capacity. And large events, I realize is outside and I don't know what the capacity is there.
It's 50, it's 5,000 square feet. It's 200 by 250.
Right. But in terms of, in terms of, in terms of capacity, I mean, I'll throw this out to everybody else, but I would be much more comfortable since we're, since I believe John is still flexible at this point, since he's, you know, moving stuff from June to July, why not grab a date late September and lock that in?
I thought he had a second date in mind in addition to the July, the original.
I think, I might actually, and I'll ask Jeff, Jeff, does John has two other events coming up in September?
There's one in September. I believe it's September 12th. It's the week after the community event.
And what, what is that? And what, what is that?
He is on. John is on, both John and Lauren are on. So if you want me to unmute them, I will be more than happy to.
Not yet, please.
I think it's.
I just totally agree, disagree that, I mean, I, I don't understand why we, we don't know enough and why, and the governor has also said in his orders specifically that villages and municipalities shouldn't be inviting more people in. We can't control who's coming in on a car or a bus unless we shut the whole village down, which I don't know if we could actually do. But we can stop additional people from coming into the village. I don't know why we want to invite five hundred people into the village when we really don't know a lot about where we're going to be or what's going to happen. And, and just to continue this, it's not like, I mean, what's the advantage to us? There is none.
I mean, I would prefer seeing it wait. I mean, I realize John's put a lot into it, and he also has sent it, from what I understand, has sent it to the governor and to the county, and I don't know if he's gotten any feedback from them on his plan that he's put out. But I'm, I'm just, I would, I just think it's much too soon when we, after we get into phase four, for us to get our heads on straight.
Almost every huge, there are so many festivals that are like, you know, like iconic festivals that have canceled that aren't going on this summer. You know, with huge, you know, revenue losses in these, and to villages, the counties, to vendors, to venues. And, you know, for us to be contemplating this when all these people have made this a har, much harder decision than this, I would, I would err on the, you know, side of safety for this one.
I think if we. I think if we can wait, if we can wait until September, at least we'll have the advantage of knowing whether there are going to be any, any coronavirus spikes after, after phase two, three, and four. Which also, I'd like to remind everybody, is also contingent on continuing to meet those metrics. If the metrics go back, then, then, you know, phase two, three, four are pushed back again.
Agreed.
It would be worthwhile.
Go ahead.
I think it would be worthwhile to just put a moratorium on large gatherings until the end of August. And then by September, we'll be able to see and we'll know whether, you know, we'll have the data before us whether, you know, we're going to see another spike again. I mean, all the news I've been reading is that when they open up, we see spikes again, so.
And, and I would, I would counter argue that every, every day we get more and more data about what's happening in the state of New York, which can be monitored on a daily basis. I'm just suggesting that, that we, we take a look at things in the middle of June and see whether or not it seems reasonable.
But why, why should we risk this? Why, why? What benefit is it not to push it off to reevaluate in, at the end of July, or somewhere, or beginning of August, and decide on September with data that we, you know, will have from these other places that are opening way before us? I mean, what's the advantage? Why, why would, why do we want to risk that? I don't understand that.
Okay, that's fine. I just thought that he had a very reasonable plan. He was doing social distancing, masks, hand sanitizing, probably safer than being on Main Street.
It could be, but we don't control Main Street that well. It's not a, it's not a confined area, and it's public space, you know, whereas this is public and it's, it's within borders and, and we don't have to do it. We don't have to have that more, that many more people in our village.
Okay, I'll raise the same arguments when we get closer to community day.
Well, I, I'm with you on that, and I'm not saying we should have community day. I think we should find out, and I think we have time to spend, time on that. And if we reevaluate at the beginning of August, that'll be plenty of time for people to have something in September. John has always told us, and one of his arguments, that, you know, he needed more time than he needs now. All of a sudden, now we don't need that much time, you know, he could, he can cancel at any time. They need a month, what do we have to give them? You know, so, you know, we can cancel something. We just have the fireworks is the only thing in jeopardy right now that we find out when we can cancel that. And we just don't have it. I'm, I'm with you totally. We have to evaluate whether to have it or not. I'm not saying we should have it. It might be just as, it might be horrible, so we'll just, you know, look at that one, reevaluate when we get later into the year.
It sets me.
Steve, any comment?
What are we talking about? Um, I agree with you, Dave. I think we can wait. But we don't know enough to, to give him the okay in July at this point. So why would we, why would we waste his time and our time? And, and I agree that, do we really need even more people visiting the village at this time? So. I'm with you on that.
So is there a consensus here, or there not a consensus? Do we have to vote on this? Or it seems like the majority is in favor of not reconsidering this?
I'm in favor of not reconsidering.
I agree with Fran.
Steve?
Same.
Marie?
Obviously, I brought it up because I thought we should reconsider it.
Okay. All right, so from that, we're, we're leaving the kind of a, not having any large events until, till September. And I think we should reevaluate in, at the beginning of August.
I agree. Well, yeah, what if things go good and then we're all in the clear by then? And we can, we don't know the answer yet, so. You know?
Next is reopening businesses on Main Street and reopening the village, basically. And I'm not sure how much control we have over this. I know the chamber is working on signs. We're working on signs. We're working on street stencils and trying to do, we're going to do one way and try that, see if it works pedestrian one way. I don't know, it's the, we can try it. Kind of the stencils are in motion. Hopefully have them this week. Found paint can easily be had, so that's good. We have signs that can be made by, if everyone agrees on them and have those made up for the, for this weekend, we can get them up. Besides that, I think that the shop owners, a lot of the responsibility is on them, on controlling their stores for sure. And whether they want people with masks on or not. And I think that's, the governor's giving the okay for that. They can stop people from coming into their stores, so that'll be up to them. The streets, you know, for phase two, it'll be retail. I don't know if there'll be big lines for retail. I don't think there will be, but it has to be controlled, and there has to be some space given for that. And shop owners should prepare for that and put lines up, I, I guess, outside for most shops. I don't know how that works when you have two or three shops close together and people are waiting to get into each one. It's going to be.
Just, just a couple of points on the phase two retail reopening. What I've seen, a couple of things. First of all, all of the, all of the retail stores, anything else that's opening is limited to fifty percent of their normal capacity. That's employees and customers. And it's, you know, retail stores have the right to deny any customer entry who does not have a mask on. Employees must wear masks, and employees who are working for retail stores should be given masks by their employer and clean ones every day. But I, and you also have to do the same thing you did for phase one, which is go on to forward.ny.gov and confirm, affirm that you have read the guidelines for phase two with the, with the governor, you know, the same thing you did. Click confirm, read all the guidelines, post it in your, in your shop, have your, have your plans posted also in your shop. So basically, fifty percent of your capacity is all you're allowed in your stores, which I realize is relatively small. In terms of hair salons and barber shops, and Marie pointed this out to me this morning, I believe it was, the guidelines are very specific that this is only for hair cutting. And it says, does not apply to nail salons, tattoo parlors, or any other non-haircutting-related personal care services or activities. Included, this does not apply to beard trimming, nose hair trimming, facials, no manicures, no pedicures, no makeup application, no threading, no tweezing, or no waxing, specifically only barbers and beauty shops just for hair cutting and nothing else. The same thing, fifty percent, no waiting area, and so on, so forth. So please, the guidelines are very specific on forward.ny.gov. Read them, affirm that you've read them, post them in your shops. And that's all I have at this point, I believe. I think the other thing that's opening is the offices, and the offices, and that's the same thing with fifty percent and the same rules. So that's all I have for that.
Thank you, Fran.
So I can't get my nails done.
Yeah, that's a problem, huh?
That big problem. Have to keep.
Can we get perms?
No, yeah, you can get it. As long as it's your hair, you can do it.
Okay. I need them.
Yeah.
Lynn or anyone else on, on the openings or things, whatever?
I, you know, I just encourage people to, like Fran did, to go to the New York State Forward site and really make sure that you follow all those guidelines. I think they're pretty specific and very helpful. I mean, I've got them all printed out. I think they're very helpful, so.
Do we have a plan for how we're going to enforce the masks on Main Street and things like that, and the distancing?
I have not talked to Larry about where we're going to go with that.
But it's up to him, then?
I believe it's, it's more of a strong suggestion. You know, we have masks, and, you know, Dave and I had talked about this earlier, about getting people to volunteer to, to direct people and hand out masks for people coming on, but I don't know what, I don't know what the enforcement is. I mean, I don't know what the enforcement is for businesses that don't open, that don't follow the rules, but other than that, I mean, it's up to the businesses to not serve anybody who doesn't have a mask on. So that's the best that I've seen.
I'm really referring to Main Street mainly, and crowds of people that are obviously going to be closer than six feet to each other.
I think with six feet, if it's closer and you can't, and there's no choice, that you have to wear a mask, so.
Yeah.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know how.
Slap the cuffs on them? Take them down.
We do have a lot of masks that, you know, Jeff got, you know, so we can hand out masks to people. If we put an ad and try to find some volunteers from, you know, to maybe, as Fran said, direct people on the one-way and hand out masks, you know, depend on finding some people that would like to do, help us with that. That it, but for this, I, I don't know what, this is all going to be new. I don't know what to expect. I don't know how people are going to line up, or if, you know, if people have three people in the store, some of the stores are really small. I know some of the stores have, Helen's Old Store has a number of vendors in there. How do you work with that? I, you know, I don't know.
That's tight in there.
Well, I think we just need to rely on our Main Street merchants and store owners to, to really follow the guidelines for themselves, their employees, and, and their customers. And if, if store owners are diligent about this and communicating it to their customers, then, you know, we're all in agreement, and, and that's the support that we get from them. And my observation being out, when I've been out in public, I mean, I've been avoiding it a lot, but, you know, people do pretty much self-regulate as far as the masks. And people, from what I've seen in the grocery store, if you're not wearing a mask or wearing it improperly, people are not shy about asking other people to put one on or wear it properly. So I think people are doing a pretty good job kind of self-regulating. I've got to hand it to them. But, you know, I'd like, I'd like the merchants to feel empowered to do that, too.
But I think it's their responsibility, actually, and I think it's, you know, to, to do that. So hopefully, you know, you know, they're going to have to take care of business, too. If there's some businesses that won't do that and won't adhere to the orders, then, you know, we'll have to deal with that. But I, I think you're right. I think it's definitely not going to be perfect. There are definitely people that are not going to walk one-way. They're not going to distance. They're not going to wear masks. It's, it's just going to happen. But I do agree also that people have done a pretty good job. We'll just have, have to see, and put signs up, and I don't know what else we can do besides bringing in the National Guard to stop people from putting masks on or putting. Anyway, if you guys have anything else, or do you want to open it up and, and entertain some comments? Or anything else on, on the agenda?
I'm good to open up. Someone just asked how they raised their hand.
But I think we already have, I see raised hands here, so I can call out, I think if Jeff, do you, do you put out the raised hand down there?
Yeah, you know, John Shearer, John Shearer's been waiting patiently to comment, so, and he's been, he had the first one with his hand raised, so, John, I just unmuted you.
I don't think.
Okay, so we'll go, John, if you're there, just state your name, although I have to set it, and, and your address.
All right, sounds good. It's John Shearer, Four Campbell Avenue, Cold Spring. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hey, I.
I hear your phone, too.
Yeah, I know, right? Sorry, sorry. Yeah, I, I know, you know, times have been very trying for a lot of people and stuff, and I'm not looking to cause any additional stress on our village or on our town. You know, my goal, after I heard all the, you know, the problems that we were having, my goal was to follow what the governor was asking, is to create a sort of a reopen plan, a safe plan, something that, you know, people would be able to feel comfortable at and going to. And I spent a lot of time, it's twenty pages. I know you guys have a copy. I revised it a little bit. We also posted it at our website for, you know, people who are interested in festivals. We, we don't want to cause, you know, again, stress to anybody. But we, we do certainly want to be able to get to a point where, when the time is right, to be able to be one of the event people out there, providing a safe haven and a safe event for our guests, for our vendors, for our workers. So, you know, I spent a lot of time putting, setting up tents and setting up pathways to tents and laying out an entire festival where you, you know, you sort of create a, a safe environment where people have paths and flows, which you're trying to do in Main Street, which is quite difficult, and it'll definitely be challenging, and I hope we get there and stuff. You know, it's a smaller area. So the idea was, you know, to take a large piece of property that was originally designed for, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand people, and create a, a smaller environment, a five-hundred mini-festival type. Where, you know, you, you sell, when you do a festival, you're going to always have to sell tickets in advance. You're never going to be able to now have it open to just people coming, because you'll never know how many people will come. And if you can control the amount of people that you have, then you can plan for the amount of people that are attending. Same thing for a restaurant or a store. It's difficult to control, but if you say, hey, we can handle three hundred people, and we can lay it out and, and be logical about the whole layout, there's no reason why we can't do that. I was, I was raised as an engineer. I spent twenty years in electrical engineering, and I've always been trying to solve problems. I'm not trying to cause a problem for the village. I'm actually just trying to create an economic stream. I consider it sort of like a microburst of people coming in because they want to go out and they want to enjoy themselves, and they want to try to get to be normal again, if that'll ever take place. And we want, and there are people out there that want to come to a festival. They want to enjoy themselves. They want to be safe, and they also want to be able to stimulate the economy. And it's just not my festival or our festival, but it's, you know, the twenty, twenty-six or twenty-five. And it's just not my festival or our festival, but it's, you know, the twenty-six or twenty-five New York Brewers that you bring in and they get to meet people and try to have those people come to their places. It's the four or five food trucks that are really starving and are all from New York, where they'll be able to make the money in a day in a safe way with a path. And as I indicated in my drawings, you know, us installing three hundred six-foot stakes with whether it's warning tapes or business signs in which to create a very cool New Jersey boardwalk flow that you wish you could have on Main Street, but we're going to try to create it in Cold Spring. We want to be a leader and not a follower. We know July seventh is for the phase four. And we're not asking for July fifth or July sixth. We're asking for like three weeks after July seventh. We're flexible to adjoint it, adjourn it to, you know, in August. And we're bringing people to the park. We're asking for four or five hundred. Our goal was a five hundred mini-fest to bring to the park. Those might people might come to our town, but there's going to be thousands of people coming to our town and everybody knows it over the next two months. There'll be thousands and thousands of people coming to the town. They'll come from Jersey and Connecticut and Pennsylvania, and they'll love to come to the town and they'll want to be, go back to the old days. And that's, our little mini-fest is something that we're not trying to impact the town. But what we do is we try to help promote the town. Some of the businesses will feel some of the people that come and go from the festival. But we do it in a safe way, you know, and I'm willing to actually lay out five or six tents at the ballpark and show you that each tent has their own little business. They have their own flow into the tent and then out of the tent and into the tent and out of the tent.
John, John, I hate to interrupt you, but we, I don't think anyone's disputing the time you've put in or whether, you know, the planning that you've done. I think it's bringing, there's a virus going on here. I don't know how serious anyone takes it. I still take it seriously. And to bring five hundred more people, and that means five hundred more cars, they're not going to come down one way and just park there and go home, John. They're going to be driving through town. They're not just going to go to your festival. They're going to go through town, and that's more of an impact. And if you have a thousand people, like you say, on the streets, that's true. But now you're going to have a thousand five hundred on the street or whatever goes there. So we're not arguing about how much time you've put in and what's going there. We're talking about, I'm talking about, I'm not sure what everyone else is. I'm talking about the safety of the village and doing as much possible, you know, for the safety of the village, you know? And I don't, I don't agree that we should have, and either does the governor, from what he's had in his statements about bringing people in unnecessarily to large events. I agree with that, and I think that that's a prudent thing to do. It's not to have large events, bringing more people into our village. It has nothing to do with how much work you've done, how much time you've spent on laying out stuff, how tall your tents are, how much plastic you're going to have, or how many ribbons or whatever. It's about bringing five hundred more people into the village on a busy weekend.
Well, what I'm trying to do, Dave, is to.
I understand what you're trying to do, John, and we've gone through this like several hundred times, both of us.
No, wait one second, Dave. No, you know, we really haven't, and I'm not sure if the trustees, whether, you know, hopefully they've all taken an opportunity to look at it. When phase three opens up, there's not going to be any discussions on your part to close any businesses or anything like that. And when phase four comes open, and I'm not asking, and I'm asking for flexibility. I'm asking to say, okay, you know what, three weeks after phase four opens, yes, we'll have a festival, but you know what? If problems happen in June and I need, and we need to postpone our festival, we're willing to do that. We're not looking, this is a tourist town. You can't really use the governors. If you were in, up in Slatter.
John, we are the representatives of this village and its safety is paramount. And regardless of what you say, we can stop that. We do not have to have a venue open and we don't have to have it open forever. We just started this a few years ago. Maybe that was a mistake. It increases the amount of work we have to do in the village. It becomes quite a bit of a headache, John. And so, you know, we're not like the boardwalk and hopefully we're not the boardwalk of New Jersey because right now that's pretty messy. So as you referred to that before, I don't want to go there. I don't see there's any reason to go there. So what you're trying to do is it really doesn't matter to me, John, and it doesn't matter how much time you've put into this because the bottom line is we have residents that I'm considering, and I think the safety of those is way more important than, you know, than a few truck drivers making some money or whatever. I understand everyone's doing that. But that doesn't mean that we have to open up an event that's going to bring way more people into our village.
Just, first off, please just don't denigrate our festival, okay? Please.
How did I denigrate it, John?
By saying, oh, a few, few truck drivers, okay, Dave? We have, wait, Dave, just give me a second. We have like twenty, we have like twenty artisans that.
Okay, so we're going to argue this point, John. John, did you hear anything that I said? Did you hear the part about five hundred people coming to our village? Did you hear that part and that that was the concern?
I did, Dave. I did, and at least I'll know, at least I'll know the five hundred people that come to our festival because nobody's buying tickets the day of the event. They're all buying them in advance, will know exactly where everybody is. And guess what, Dave? When they come to your town, you're going to not know anybody. They're coming and going and coming and going. At least I have a controlled environment. I appreciate your time. Thanks for being so considerate and you have a good night, okay? Thanks.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, bye-bye, Dave. You gotta be kidding me.
Well, that went well.
Next up is Heidi.
Hi, Heidi.
Hi, Heidi Bender. I own Split Arc Books and I live at ninety-five Main Street. So thank you. I'm not going to do video. So I have, I have a lot of thoughts, but I'll try and condense them. So just in terms of the kind of support that business owners and citizens are going to get from the police, I've been trying to find out from Sheriff Langley if there is a plan for Portnum County. And I have been meaning to talk to Larry. I have not called him yet. But just to know, you know, if I go out on the street, so I have a, we have a seven-month-old baby who's too young to wear a mask, but children can still get this toxic shock syndrome as a result of COVID. So it's, it's a concern. And something that's been happening a lot is people eating on the benches. We have one right in front of our store. And so if they're eating on the benches, I mean, I know that if I walk by them very quickly, maybe they'll be fine. But what about that moment, you know, they hawk out their Hudson Hills or, or just anything? I honestly have just felt very closed in on Main Street, and I'm just not sure what to do about it. I have called the police and I have called the sheriff's department, and the response I've gotten has been, well, it's kind of a gray area. Maybe the people who are sitting together are family. You know, like, why can't you go out a different exit, stuff like that? And so in terms of thinking about starting to reopen, I'm just not feeling confident and I'm not feeling like there's, like there's guidance. And so I would love to know if you talk to Larry and the police department or the sheriff's department about, you know, what our options are for getting that support.
I have not talked to Larry about that. I mean, we're limited to, you know, limited budget-wise and we're limited to the number of police we have. I mean, usually on the weekends now, once the summer starts, we have two and someone, you know, doing parking. But that's, you know, that's what we have. I haven't talked to Larry about how we're going to deal with reopening or if we have somebody that's going to be on foot that'll be, you know, just scheduled for Main Street. I think that's what we'll have to do. But to answer your question, I haven't, haven't talked to Larry yet, but will be.
Okay, yeah, is there a way that, so one thing I think could be very helpful, they could put out some kind of statement to business owners or citizens, just letting them know what their options are. You know, like, you know, legally, police are, I, as far as my understanding, it's legally police are allowed to at least give tickets. They're allowed to find people, which is what it seems to me what Cuomo said, that local municipalities are allowed to enforce this. I don't even, you know, I don't want people fined. I don't want them arrested. I don't care. I just, I would like people to know that there is a consequence if you, if you break social distancing and maybe just have a presence there reminding people that it's serious and that there's, there's a, there's a disease. So if it's possible for the police department to put out any kind of statement, I think a lot of us on Main Street would really appreciate that. And then I just wanted to ask, can I get the bench in front of our store removed? Like, can I start up, can I petition someone? Can I, like, what, what could I do to get that bench taken away so I don't have to fight with people?
I think we can take that out. Usually it's the business right in front that has a problem. So if it wasn't scheduled, I can have that removed.
Thank you. That would, that would be great. Thanks. And then I just, real quick, I want to say that, I don't know if you've seen the chat, but I think that right now any divisive symbol on a police car is unnecessary. You know, we all have a lot of respect for the Cold Spring Police and the sheriff's office. They are great to our community, but I just, I think an American flag is acceptable if they feel like they need something. But that even if it wasn't their original intention, intention, if people are hurt by it, then it's just not necessary at a time when, when there's just so much going on in the country right now. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the last person, Ryan Traul.
Hello, Ryan.
Hi. I'm not going on video, just audio?
Yes.
Let's see.
Just audio.
I could put you on video if you want.
There we go.
Hi, so I guess it's been about two weeks since we last spoke about the idea of closing Main Street or sections of Main Street for periods of time, primarily on the weekends. So this, I spent the better part of the last two weeks talking to business owners on Main Street. And the idea has a lot of momentum right now. We've got about twenty or twenty-five businesses who support this idea who think it would make a substantial difference in their ability to remain viable for the foreseeable future. This fifty percent capacity for businesses could be with us for indefinitely until there's a vaccine. And I, what I've heard in speaking to many business owners is they don't believe they'll be viable at fifty percent. And so what I think we could face is losing a lot of businesses on Main Street. And I don't think, you know, if we're prepared to let those businesses fail, I don't think, I think it's going to take years for those vacancies to be, to be filled, given the current economic environment. I don't think anyone's going to want to start a restaurant or a retail business right now. I think it's essential that we think about how we support our businesses on Main. And so, so this idea of closing Main Street for, you know, periods of time, primarily on Fridays and Saturdays and different sections, has taken a lot of momentum amongst businesses and residents. We have a petition going. We have about twenty-five businesses on that petition. And we're now moving on to residents who are on side streets. And I actually haven't come across a single person or business who hasn't thought the idea is, not only makes sense for the village and for the survival of the businesses, but they actually think it'll help keep, first of all, traffic out of the village. So we're worried about having too many people in the village. By eliminating parking and vehicles, we actually reduce the density in the village. And by opening up the street to businesses and to restaurants, we increase the space for people to move around. And what the common theme I've heard on this call is everyone's concerned about having enough space on the sidewalks. This is a solution of controlling traffic and density while also increasing space. So, so, yeah, so I, we, we've started to noodle around with a couple different ways that we could do this. But I should say that, first of all, there are hundreds of cities and towns and villages that are doing the same thing. So there's definitely a precedent here, and not all of them are even as viable options as Cold Spring. We actually, as you look at the map, there are, there are some options. So I think that there's definitely a precedent being set for this. And I think if, if we can embrace it and we can be innovative, I think we, we can compete with the villages and towns that surround us who are already thinking about these types of plans. And I think if we don't, then we face another challenge for our businesses, which is we become seen as an unfriendly business community. We become seen as a community that doesn't innovate, and they just go to neighboring villages. And so that's another hit on our businesses. So I think those are the reasons why we should be considering this idea. And I have, Mayor Morandi, I sent you a map, which was an initial sketch of how I think we could very aggressively close down. This would be the most aggressive side of the spectrum for the plan would be to close down all of Main and to figure out egress points in and out of the village and in and out of the lower village. I sent you a map. I don't know. Let me see if I can share my screen. I don't know if I can share my screen. So the concept that I sent you is it would be the most aggressive approach, would be shutting down all of Main. And so we can think about shutting down sections of Main, parts of Main, certain streets where there are the most restaurants or the most retail shops. But what I sent you was the most aggressive plan. And then the goal here was to have everyone, let's all poke holes in it, find things that are wrong with it, say, I live on this street, so it doesn't make sense. And well, you know, you can tear it to pieces. And then we'll all work together to kind of come up with what's, what's the, what's the middle of the road concept? So if it's not closing down all of Main, is it opening part of it to one-way traffic? Is it closing it down in segments? Is it closing it down for the whole day? Or do we just focus on the peak hours like lunch and dinner? Or, you know, twelve to three when things get really busy? But I think, so I wanted to open it up for conversation. I mean, I'm going to continue to petition the community and businesses and see if we can get the preponderance of people and businesses in this community to be on board. But the other thing I would consider is when we go back to that fifty percent rule, just because you open up a business and you're allowed to have fifty percent capacity doesn't mean that people are going to want to go inside and people are afraid. And so I think we have to think about all options and all the space that we have available in this community. Luckily, we actually have a lot of space. I think Mayor Morandi, you said that it's a small village and the streets are tight. But we actually have a lot of spaces between our streets, between parking lots, between Depot Square. There's actually a lot of space. It's not, it's not as dense as New York City, which is attempting to do this very same thing. In fact, New York City does it every Saturday, and literally they shut down Mulberry Street. I think we can figure it out. I think it's just trying to find the right plan. And I'm, you know, I don't work for the highway department. I'm not an expert in this. But we're working on a couple of different scenarios. I sent you one, which is the most extreme side of the spectrum. And then we can come up with a couple other possible scenarios that are a little more conservative. But want to get a sense of how we move forward on this concept. I think there are enough other communities doing it that we should absolutely consider it. And I think hearing from businesses that it could substantially help them remain viable. I actually heard a couple of businesses say this would be the thing that could, that could make me viable. And those are primarily the restaurants where, you know, they, if they remain at fifty percent capacity for another nine months, they're going to hang it up. Nobody, nobody can or wants to break even or just keep the lights on. A lot of these businesses survive on this income. So that's, that's the idea. Would love to see how we progress and proceed.
Ryan, I've been looking into this, too, and doing some research on it and which, which towns and cities are actually trying to, trying to implement closing down certain streets and opening it up so that there's more space between shoppers and diners and stuff like that. One of the advantages that the cities that are doing it have over Cold Spring is that their streets are set out on a grid pattern so that, so that there are parallel streets to the Main Street that's, that's shut down for long distances. This is something that Cold Spring doesn't have. You know, if Cold Spring had a parallel street to the north and to the south of Main Street, then it makes closing Main Street much more viable for emergency services and also for the residents of Main Street and the side streets to get in and out. But we don't have those parallel streets, which makes it, if there was an emergency, it makes it very, very difficult for, for the fire trucks and emergency personnel, EMTs and so forth, to quickly get through the village without having to drive through a bunch of pedestrians that are wandering around in Main Street. It's unfortunate, but we. It's unfortunate, but we don't have that layout in our village. I was looking at Beacon, I've been talking to some people in Beacon, who are really advocating for it. And they have, I mean, while they don't have parallel streets that run the entire length of Main Street on the north and the south, you know, they're chopped up a little bit. But for the most part, there are long distances of parallel streets to Main Street, so that if they do shut sections of it down, there's easy egress and ingress to the side streets, and for residents, and for emergency vehicles. Unfortunately, you know, I appreciate what you've been doing in looking for solutions here. But, you know, I think we're going to have a challenge, a big challenge in front of us, just to get people, the most people possible, to follow the one-way sidewalk pedestrian traffic that we're directing people to do. I think if we throw a whole lot of traffic changes at people very quickly, I think we're just going to create chaos. And, believe me, I'm a restaurant owner myself, I haven't opened up yet. But I'm a restaurant owner myself, I used to have a business on Main Street. I feel the pain of my fellow business owners, I really do. But I'm not willing to put our residents at risk. That's just how I feel about it.
Can I jump in here for a second? Ryan's asking permission to share his screen. Ryan, we're two and a half hours into this meeting, and the trustees have not had an opportunity to review what is you want to share, if you'd like to send it, and then, will there be another meeting a week from tonight? And then, this way, they have a chance to review it and digest it. I think it'd be more fair, and a better use of time for everybody.
I agree.
Sure, that sounds like a plan. I'll send it over. I think you'll see in the plan, we actually have viable egresses, if we think about how we use all the streets. Viable egresses for emergency vehicles, and everyone who's at Lower Main. It can be done, no doubt, it's going to be complicated, but I think, and it's going to require some thinking. But, you know, look, those emergency vehicles don't have an easy time getting down Main Street when they're a car. Whether it's cars or people, it's pretty tough. So, I think we can get creative and find a way. I think it's that important, I think it's that critical to the viability of our businesses, that we try to get creative, and think of a way. I think we can make it happen. I think we can find a way. So, I'll send my map.
Yeah, if you get it to me tomorrow, and I'll share it with the board, and then, we'll be added to the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for listening.
Thank you.
I think, you know, there's a number of things that I'm concerned about, and it hasn't, like, I haven't thought about closing Main Street, or, and I think I sent you a letter, both to my children, one was in Ithaca, and was in Burlington, both have, designed by the same people, you know, as the, have the Main Street that's pretty much a plaza. But they're cities, and they have cross streets, they have two-way cross streets. We have mostly one-way cross streets. We have pretty much a dead end. We have businesses that are at the river, that depend on traffic getting there. We have Forge Gate Apartments, which I'm sure will claim that that property is theirs, and there'll be a battle over, the only way possible, unless you have some miracle plan, is to go through Forge Gate. So, that will be a battle we'll have to fight. And then, there's MTA, and the amount of traffic that'll be going through all these back streets. We're going to push all of the business that we have on Main Street, all the traffic, to side streets. And we have to consider all the residents when we're doing that. If you want everyone going down, all of a sudden, there's going to be streams of traffic going down Northern Avenue, and whichever way you're figuring out where people are going. I mean, that's one of the biggest concerns I have. Pushing more traffic to side streets, and making the residents' lives even more, you know, complicated than they are on weekends. So, you know, those are things you definitely need to consider. I'm not sure how you overcome, you know, Forge Gate, MTA, parking, the businesses that are on Lower Main, the people that live on Main Street. There are a lot of people who live on Main Street also, that we always forget about, that don't want to have access. If you're talking Fridays now, what about deliveries? What about deliveries on Saturdays? How do we deal with that? How many police do you think we need to, like, say, "Okay, time's up, everyone has to get out of the village," to close off streets? So, you know, having it at certain times seems very complicated to me, another thing to consider. So, I'm willing to hear, if there's plans, and you come up with stuff that's viable, I think everyone will listen. I think that most of us have thought about that, and I'm not sure where, you know, if I had come up with an answer, I would have tried to implement it by now. So, like I told you, I'd be interested in seeing how it would work. But I definitely think we have to, one of the big considerations is pushing traffic off to the side streets.
Okay, next is Tara Vamos. Tara?
Yeah, hi. So, I, oh, I was trying to turn my camera on, too. I also sent a note to you, Dave, I don't know if you got it? Did you get a mail from me just this afternoon? With, yeah, you did, because you mentioned something about it. It also has maps attached of potential plans. Basically, I think one option is to go, I think, when I, I hadn't thought about it as much when I was talking to you guys two weeks ago. I think if you go one-way from around Church Street down to Depot Square, and then come back up through Depot Square, that is a tight road. I don't know how that corner, it's not called Depot Square, when you go, just...
Railroad Avenue.
Yeah, I don't know how that's two-way. It would probably have to be one-way if it had more traffic on it. But I just would like to really urge you to look at plans to get rid of parking on the street, and get rid of one lane of traffic at least, just for narrow windows of time, to see if it can be a way to set up businesses further out onto the sidewalk. Because I think it would be also a fun way, a nice way to experience Main Street. And it might be possible to just do it for like a six-hour window on Saturdays. We have shut down Main Street many times for parades and whatnot. You know, like, it does get shut down sometimes. So, the idea of shutting it down for a bit longer of a stretch, and being like, "Okay, we're going to have, you know, fun summer Saturdays in Cold Spring," might be a way to promote the town. I know that it's a mixed bag promoting the town right at the moment, but I do think it's something that we're going to have to transition into, how to make it possible for businesses to have a lot of people attend them. And other than that, this has been a really great, interesting meeting. Thank you, Lynn Miller and Steve Vitolo, so much for speaking really eloquently about the Black Lives Matter, not the Black Lives Matter flag, but the Blue Lives Matter flag on police cars, which I was startled by. I thought, I saw it a couple months ago at night, and I actually, like, momentarily, like, was startled by the vehicle. And then, I realized it was a police car, and I was, like, taken aback by figuring out it was a police car. And I regret not going further on it, and getting back to you guys about it, like, immediately afterwards. Because I definitely feel a little bit on edge. I have about the same reaction to that as I do to having people troll around with giant American flags on the back of their trucks, revving their engines. Like, I associate it with the same thing, and I don't, it does not make me feel safe. And I know that some people mention that they don't feel, that they never feel threatened by the police, or they feel that the village is very friendly. But I would just like to say that if you are not, and I'm not a person of color, but I have been with people, like, if you, if you're not in the minority that's being singled out, then you don't have the experience, because everybody is being very nice to you. It's when you're in the minority, and you get a weird stare, or the cold shoulder, or the nasty look, or the slur, or the, you know, like, you know, it goes up and up bit by bit. But the fact that you experience a place one-way, or you experience the police force one-way, doesn't mean that it's the same experience for everybody else. So, I really...
You're referring to my comment. I don't think I was trying to say that, you know, I'm not naive, and there's racism all over the world, and it's definitely in the village. I'm just saying that I don't feel it's that, and it's not me feeling comfortable. I don't, it seems like a very friendly village to me, with the exception, of course, of there's some people, then, but I think that's to be found everywhere. So, you know, I just want to be clear, you know, I'm not naive. I don't think that, you know, I can put myself in other people's shoes. Right now, I have a tenant that's, you know, there's a black man and a white woman that are living in my house with their two children, and we've discussed these things. So, you know, I'm not naive, and, you know, I think that, from what I understand and talk to people, it seems like the same village, maybe I'm just being naive, maybe it's my little inner circle. But I don't, you know, what I was trying to say was that I don't find this village, like, a threatening village, which seems to be, I guess, you know, the implications of this decal.
Well, I guess, I feel like I misspoke a bit, too, mostly what I wanted to say. Somebody brought up the idea of not wanting, of making the police appear approachable to people. And a Blue Lives Matter flag does not make the police cars look approachable to everyone. To some people, it definitely does not. That's, I'll just stick with that. And thank you, guys, for working through all of this stuff. I appreciate you taking the time and your endurance. Thanks.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you, Tara.
Okay, next is Maggie Valentine.
Actually, it's Dan Valentine. I just, thank you for kind of postponing to next week to look at the plans for closing down Main Street. You know, we have some concerns as residents. We live on Garden Street. I've lived here my whole life, been part of the Fire Department for a long time, and actually took part in planning for large anniversary parades on Main Street, which involved closing every side street. Although, there's only two streets off of Main Street that run in both directions, we had to close off every street with police officers. And nowadays, terrorism doesn't seem like it can make it right in Cold Spring. But we have to block roads with large vehicles or concrete barriers to prevent the accidental driver from exiting a driveway and turning the wrong way into a crowd of people. It's very challenging to close down sections of the village. We were talking about the benches earlier, and we had sent an email. We are concerned about the benches, too, because, you know, we have young family, and we do sit on the benches from time to time throughout the week. We walk out on Main Street on the weekends, but if it's crowded, we know, we just kind of turn around and go home, or go someplace else. But the executive order by the governors is not really enforceable by the police. There's no mechanism in the order for enforcement. The best thing that the police can do is really just educate people to maintain a safe distance. Because most of the time, the people who are together are in their quarantine bubble, and they're just out sort of exercising, or doing that. Some of the other people we spoke to on Main Street, residents, are upset that people are sitting on their stoops, you know, and having a snack, or drinking a bottle of water. So, I think the more benches we remove, we may run into more of those types of situations where people will start calling the police, because people are sitting on their property. But thank you for holding off another week on the Main Street plan. I'd be happy to talk more about my experience with closing roads and stuff like that, but thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
And I think the last hand raised is Mr. Shear.
Well, thanks, Jeff. I just wanted to come back and apologize for a little outburst there at the end and stuff. You know, it's been stressful times, and, you know, we'll look for somewhere else for a festival. We don't want to cause too much stress in our town. And we appreciate you working with us in the past. We would love to have had our festival here in town, and be one of the beginners, and one of the forefront leaders. But I understand where you're coming from. You guys made your decisions, and again, thank you for the time.
Thanks, John.
We have one more? Yes, Stephanie has her hand raised, trying to unmute her. Okay, Stephanie?
Thank you, John. Stephanie Hawkins, 15 Academy Street. I just, I wanted to thank the Village Board, and our officer in charge, Larry Burke, for discussing the Blue Lives Matter emblem. And I want to thank you all for being so open, and for your interest in self-educating on the issues that people lifted up this week and tonight to the Village Board, and to our officer in charge. So, thank you. And I also want to thank the village for being conservative and prioritizing public health in the village. I know that there's tension between public health and business interests, and opening up. And I just want to thank you for treading cautiously. I think we're all looking ahead to an unknown, and we have been told that we can expect a second wave of infection. And I'm anxious about that personally, and also, I'm concerned about my neighbors. And so, I want to do what I can to limit our exposure, and to thank you, to all of you, for making, having those difficult discussions, and making those difficult decisions on our behalf. Thank you.
You. Is that it, Jeff?
That looks like it's it.
Okay, it's been a long night, and some heavy topics. So, thank you, Board. Thank you, everyone, for listening, and thank you all for your comments. We do take everyone's comments seriously, and it's very valuable. Thank you all. Difficult time. Please, everybody, stay safe. We're going to get through this, obviously. It's been made a little harder now. So, but we'll get through it. It's gotten through worse, I think. And so, again, thank everybody. Thank you, Board, for hanging in there. Thank you, everyone, for calling, and I'll make a motion. Well, does anyone else have anything to say before closing?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn, then.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Good night, all. Thanks, Michael.
Good night.
Bye.